Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Pastor Stephen Will Hoyt of the Word of Life Church to lead us in prayer this morning.
If you'd bag your heads in a word of prayer with me this morning. Father, we thank you that this is the day that you have made, and so we rejoice and we're glad in it. We know that there's a lot on the agenda this morning, and this day it's full of different ideas people have, different needs that people have, and so we pray today for, as Solomon prayed, for wisdom, that this council would govern rightly and have the best interest of this city and her citizens at heart, that we put aside differences, that we put aside our own personal agenda, that it's not about our own game, but it's about what's good for all. And so we thank you today that you are reigning, and you are righteous, and you are the judge, and you are Jesus, the King of Kings and Lord of Lords, and that you've put these people in this place of authority for a time such as this, and so we pray that they would have the mind of Christ to do what is best for this city, and we thank you for that opportunity today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'll be joined this morning by Aiden Kendrick. He's the son of Brian Kendrick, our deputy city clerk, and he's going to help me with the pledges. And he's an old hand, professional at this. Come on up here with me, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Aiden looks sharp, and he is sharp. I have a proclamation to share with you on fire prevention week. Thomas, would you like to join me? This is Thomas Truitt. He's our fire inspector here for the city. The proclamation, whereas, "Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire; and whereas, fire departments in the United States responded to nearly 400,000 home fires in a single year; and whereas, San Angelo residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes; and whereas, the fire service of San Angelo is dedicated to the safety of life and property from the devastating effects of fire, and they are joined by other emergency service providers, businesses, safety advocates, schools, and service clubs. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of October the 7th through the 13th, 2012, as Fire Prevention Week."
Thank you, Mayor New and the council and ICM Dane, thank you for this proclamation. Fire Prevention Week is held in the week that contains October 9th because of remembering the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, and just as that was devastating to that community, we know that fire prevention and fire safety is really a community effort. Each person acting individually helps, but together as a community is how we reduce the threat of fire to our city as, we don't want to see that devastation like they had in Chicago. So, in that community effort, it's, we have a lot of good partners that work with us. I'd like to recognize them if we have just a moment. Of course, in our office, we're headed by our fire marshal, Ross Coleman. He's in the room there, all right? And the real powerhouses from our office that keeps the coordinated effort of the, all the groups that I'm about to mention, those people are Brent Donahoe and Randy Hannah. They're also here today, so. The San Angelo Fire Department provides some manpower and equipment that is presented at the schools. In the next two weeks, we'll be doing school programs, trying to reach the elementary schools, approximately 12,000 students in those schools in San Angelo. And Brent and Randy head that up. San Angelo Fire Department provides that part, but we're also joined with the Goodfellow Fire Department, and they have a role in those programs. We have a couple of, well, we have four representatives from the Goodfellow Fire Department back there. And then the Department of Defense Fire Training Academy. They, together, they provide Sparky and the handlers for Sparky, and then some equipment that's also demonstrated or shown at the school programs. During Fire Prevention Week, we'll be recognizing, in our programs at schools, we'll be recognizing fire prevention poster winners. Next Tuesday, a committee from the San Angelo Rotary Club will judge those posters, decide the winners, and have provided plaques for the first four places in grades three, four, and five. So, we don't know the results of that till next Tuesday, but we're looking forward to doing those presentations and recognitions provided for by San Angelo Rotary Club. So, as you can see with those groups of fire department, fire prevention, fire training, the schools that allow us to come out and do those programs, and then the San Angelo Rotary Club, it's really a community effort toward fire prevention and fire safety. So, we thank you, Alvin, and, excuse me, Mayor New, and, okay. All those that were here for the proclamation, please come forward. Thank you, Mayor New.
Mr. Truitt, how long have you been doing this in the schools?
Okay. This is my 36th Fire Prevention Week, so we're, we've been doing it for quite a while. The first national recognition for Fire Prevention Week started in 1911, so contrary to some common belief, I was not at that first convention that said, hey, we're going to make this a national recognition. That was 1911. I was not a part of that one, but I have been doing Fire Prevention Weeks now 36, this is my 36th time, so thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to invite three city employees up and acknowledge some work that they've done, so if I can be joined by Teresa Covey, if I can be joined by Nora Regina, and if I can be joined by Cindy White. First, let me acknowledge Teresa Covey. She's the Emergency Management Office Assistant, and she has just received her associate's in Applied Science and Business Administration from Howard College. Obviously, we take great pride in all of the city employees that pursue more education and help themselves to be better serving the citizens of San Angelo, so we're proud of you guys for the efforts you've made and want to acknowledge you with a certificate this morning. Ms. Covey has been in the Emergency Management Department for five years, and during this time, she recently completed her associate's degree, and as you see, it was in Business Administration, and so certainly will help her in the Master Emergency Management Planner Course and the things that she does for us. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next, I would like to honor, well, I've got these in reverse order, ladies. I'd like to honor Cindy White, who's the Finance Department Payroll Specialist. She has a bachelor's in social psychology from Park University. Ms. White recently completed her bachelor's degree in social psychology from Park University. She also holds an associate's degree in business management from Howard College and is working on a master's degree at Angelo State University. She's been employed by the City of San Angelo for a total of 16 years. Congratulations. And Nora Regina, who is with the Community and Economic Development, she's our Community and Economic Development Administrative Assistant. She has her associate's in Applied Science and Business Management from Howard College. She began working on her degree in 2007, has worked nights and weekends to accomplish this task. The Business Management Program at Howard provides training in a wide range of business-related disciplines, including accounting, marketing, economics, human resources, and technology. Nora has developed the teamwork and leadership skills, as well as the ability to motivate people and communicate effectively, and anybody that kind of keeps Sean and that team on track and on task is doing great work, so Nora. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. The public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. Is there desire, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, I have several. First, though, I would like to, Ross McSwain gave this to me this morning, and I want people to see what we're dealing with, with the mosquito problem we have in this country. This tree, little mosquito tree, came from the west of town, and I know you can't see That root is 37 inches long. This is one little mosquito, and I tell you, in our dry rivers and our dry lakes, there are literally millions of these things poppin', popping up each day. 37 inches of taproot from the ground to the bottom, and you want to know why we've got a problem with our drought? Here's most of it right here. We need to be cleaning our rivers, we need to be cleaning our lakes and getting rid of these mosquitoes. That's my show and tell for the day. The next thing, I want to pull items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. These are the items on the consent agenda that deal with the fees that we are about to impose upon our citizens, because we don't want to impose them. But before we talk about this, I'm going to wait for Kendall to get here. We need a full council, so somewhere later in the meeting, wherever you want to put it, I want to deal with seven through 14 on the fees.
Kendall will be here within one minute?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items seven through 14.
Second. Okay. Have a motion and a second to receive or to accept the consent agenda with exception of moving items seven through 14 to the regular agenda. Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Public comment?
Of course. Making sure I haven't missed anything. Anything on the regular agenda to be moved to a future agenda or anything like that? Okay. Let me call now for public input. Sure, come on up. Come on up to this mic right there. Okay? Just introduce yourself and let us know what you need.
My name is Emma Albright, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear me today.
Talk.
Sorry. My name's Emma Albright, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear me today. I'm obviously a young citizen of San Angelo. I'm also a student at Howard College. I hold down a full-time job. I'm a wife and a stepmother, so naturally I have very little time to dig for the much needed information that I think every citizen should have easy access to. And I have some concerns regarding how the information on changes that affect citizens such as myself is being distributed to the community. First off, I want to thank Anthony Wilson for his valiant efforts to educate our citizens on topics of interest and changes that affect our community through his talk show and YouTube broadcasts. I applaud him for taking these amazing steps to reach the community. However, until I called Councilman Alexander yesterday, I had no idea that we already had contacts such as Mr. Wilson and outlets such as these broadcasts to educate ourselves. While these sources are a great way to get messages out to the community, there are many citizens that do not have cable TV, the internet, or even a newspaper subscription to educate themselves, and I think that we can do a much better job of getting the word out to those less privileged citizens. Naturally, when we had to build a pipeline to access our alternative water source from the Hickory Aquifer, the city had to raise water rates to figure out how to pay for this much-needed but expensive project. In my opinion, raising these rates was the best way to go about doing this. However, my friends' family and I were completely unaware of the rate change until we started receiving water bills upwards of $200. We started asking questions such as, you know, why are our water rates raising? Why did this happen? Is it this billing cycle, or has it been going on? Am I just now noticing it, and how can I bring it back down? I'm sad to say that I've talked to many people about the Hickory Project, because it's very interesting to me, and a lot of people have absolutely no idea what it is, but they do know that our water source is low. So it's a great concern that a lot of people have no idea what's going on in our city. While these questions that most people are asking are fair, I feel like if more notification of this change was made in advance and explained on our bill every month properly, the city could have prevented this anger and frustration that I'm seeing from other people as well as feeling myself. I do wish that there was more advertisement for these sources that we already have, as well as a research project to determine how much of the community these sources are reaching and how productive these sources are. And if they're not at the standard that we'd like them to be, we need to find out what we can do to make them more productive. I have a lot of ideas myself. I'd like to start a meeting at Howard College, just a public meeting, in which I would invite different members of the city council to speak to students, their family members and friends, and any other interested citizens on what's going on in the city, ask questions and have y'all answer them, and as well as explain the process and procedures that y'all are required to go through to make changes that affect our community and its citizens. I have many other ideas that I'm not going to completely go into today and take up all your time, but I'm aware that it takes people like me standing up today and pointing out flaws in the system so that our city can continue to make positive changes with informed citizens standing behind its council members each and every step of the way. I want to thank you again for the gracious opportunity that you've given me. I greatly appreciate the time and attention you've given me and my opinions and ideas. I hope that, I hope that by taking this step today, I'm working towards building some amazing new relationships that can only lead to making San Angelo a better city every day than it was the day before.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have other public comment? Come on.
Morning. I'm Duane Edmondson, General Manager, Yellow and Chair of Cal. I had a question, I guess, within the fee increase for the tax permits, and I feel like there is a need for permits.
You're, you're going to have a day in court in just a second because it was moved from the consent agenda to a regular agenda, okay? So you're going to see the council discuss your item, and we'll ask you to come up and help inform us when we're on that item?
All right. Your item was number 14. Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
I'll get you to help us then, okay? Thank you. Is there other public input? Okay, thank you. Let's move forward then. We'll take up item number seven on the consent agenda. Mr. Morrison, let me recognize you and go ahead and get us started.
All right, sir. We voted on these last week as a, as a group. We voted on every one of the fees together, so I am, I am lumping these things together today as a group. Items seven through 14, which are all of the different fee increases that we have proposed. This amounts to something about $258,000 worth of increases per year on our citizens. And what I'm asking for is the same thing I asked for last time, and that is an indefinite postponement of all of these fees until our new city manager has an opportunity to come into our city to look at these fees and to look at our organization and see if there are other cuts that can be made. It is my feeling that the City of San Angelo, as every business and every citizen in this city, must live within their budget. They do not have the opportunity to take in more money when they, when their expenses are larger. I think our city needs to live within their budget, and that does not mean bringing an extra $258,000 into it. I also feel with the water problems we have, that the public is stressed enough that we don't need to be adding and burdening our businesses and people unnecessarily by demanding an additional $1.25 million per year in fees. So my motion is to indefinitely postpone items seven through 14 indefinitely until Daniel has a chance to look at them, to evaluate them, and see if he can find ways to cut expenses. We need to cut expenses, not add income, and that would be my motion to postpone indefinitely items seven through 14.
Can I just?
Yes, sir.
One comment here is, I believe seven was a different item. I mean, that was one, I believe, Will had come forward on that we had to have that for...
Correct. It's the landfill utility fee. It is not related to balancing this year's budget.
My mistake. My motion will be items eight through 14. Seven is, you're absolutely right, seven was a different deal. Items eight through 14 are the fees, $258,000 worth of fees that are proposed to burden our citizens with, and I want them gone.
And I'm going to second that motion, and if I may add, that I too had trouble swallowing all this, even the last time we was presented to us the first time, but I too agree with Mr. Morrison that maybe we need to hold off a little bit, because I really don't think the city is in the business of making money, and that's the way some folks see it, but if we can hold this off till we can slice it and dice it with our new city manager coming onboard, I'm fine with it, but just, let's put it off for a while. I mean, it's not like we're going to go bankrupt again, so, again, that's my, I second the motion.
Going to go bankrupt again?
Not again, but you know what I meant.
All right. I see this as a better tax policy. I'd rather see us talking about lowering property taxes and using user fees as a, as a better source of, of revenue, and, and all of these fees have been, have been researched against the costs of providing the product, and they've also been researched against other communities and what people charge for the different things. So I, I generally agree or understand what you're describing, both of you, but I think a better approach, I mean, we gave $180,000 in property tax, property tax relief against $258,000 in fee increases. I'd rather personally see us give another half cent property tax deduction and keep these and, and just change the way we collect taxes as, is the way I personally would rather see us moving, but anyway. Ms. Farmer?
Well, I agree with you. To me, this has been sliced and diced all through our budget meetings that have been going on since July. We've done the comparison rates as to where San Angelo sits in comparison with our benchmark cities, and these fees not being increased for a number of, of years. We did give back to the folks in the way of a property tax rollback, $180,000, some odd thousand dollars, and this affects 100% of San Angelo's population that own property in San Angelo. This affects everyone, and we did give that back. Fees only affect the people that use certain services. Therefore, the raises only affect those that use those fees. It doesn't affect every citizen. It's not a $250,000 increase to every citizen. It's only the folks that use those fees that needed to be identified as an increase, as everything has increased in price the last few years. And to me, this was hashed and rehashed during budget hearings and last council meeting, and it was voted and agreed that these would not go into effect until January 1, giving those who use the fees the opportunity to adjust their rate schedules or their budgets, and, and I'm satisfied with that. And as far as the new city manager having the opportunity to look at them, I think it was discussed that once he is onboard and has a few months before January 1 to look at and to digest it and to hear from various individuals, and then he could make his proposals as to where he thought they should be before the January 1 deadline. So I support those as presented.
Sure.
I, everyone kind of heard what my opinion was last time. I, I think first off, the timing is horrible on this thing. I mean, we're about to kill stuff with water, and I just think that, wrong choice of words. I apologize for saying kill, that's, anyway. It's, it, I just think timing-wise, it's a bad deal, and I guess secondfold on that is that we increased our general fund budget by approximately 4% this year and already, and that was not via taxes, that was via just additional revenue that was coming in. And I made my points real clear, too, that I wanted to, you know, not see as much spending on that, and so I'm not opposed to raising fees, but I want it done in a way that, similar to what you're talking about, Mayor, that we can give a more, better property tax reduction, but I don't want, I want the, some cost decreases, too, to help fund that, that thing, and it's a little more of a balancing type act is what I'm hoping to find, so I again will be voting for, yes, voting for, so.
Good. Okay. And I have, please, Mr. Alexander?
Thank you, Fred. For builders, it's, it's not the fees. So when you're, when you're building a building and you have to pay a higher fee for the permit, that's, that's not the problem. It's the red tape. A day delayed in opening your business is a day of revenues you don't collect, and that, typically, those revenues are greater than the permit fee, and so there's a greater loss of money there. I mean, it's, when you go two weeks because you're delayed because of the red tape, that's super expensive, very frustrating, subcontractors are pushed back, and it gets the timing off, you can't get your building built as fast as you want to. That's, that's the problem that builders face. The other thing is our decrease in the tax rate wasn't enough to reflect the amount of fees we're getting. I think, or maybe, it's pretty close. I'm just saying, we, we got to get our tax rate down. Listen, our, our council's been together almost two and a half years, as we are right now, and we've had this, this goal of transferring fees to the user who is using the service and getting our overall tax rate down. This fits that mold perfectly, and I'm, I'm going to support it because it's working on our goals, our short, short-term goals and long-term goals here of getting our tax rate down. And so, and I think Daniel can still come in here and say what he wants to say, and if we want to make changes, we have time to make changes, because they don't go into effect until January 1. So if you have a project, you don't want to pay the higher fees, get it going now, you don't have to pay the higher fees. So I think it's okay.
Okay. Mr. Adams?
I don't want to see fees raised, but I, I also realize that if we don't raise fees, then we're going to have to do something, something to compensate for the fees that we're not raising. In, in other words, if, if we don't come up with this money through fees or some other avenue, then we're going to have to raise taxes at some point. I could, I may be misunderstanding.
Or cut expenses.
Or, or we could cut expenses. Or we could cut expenses. Correct. I heard Mr. Morrison say indefinitely, and I heard Mr. Silvis say until later, so I'm trying to figure out, get some clarity there. Are we waiting, are we wanting to? Mr. Morrison, are you saying that we shouldn't touch this at all?
I'm saying that after the new city manager comes in and looks at this, to see ways that he can cut expenses, which is, I think, the way we ought to go. If he sees at that time that there is no way to cut expenses and he needs to bring these back, if he will come to me, I will put them back on the agenda for discussion. But I want the city manager to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. I want him to cut expenses, I want him to live within the budget, and if he cannot do it, then we'll look at the fee increases.
Okay.
So I would say indefinitely, but if that's six months, if it's a year, you know, he may do it the first week, but when he comes back and says, "We need these fee increases," I'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, the other thing is, these fees are paid annually, right?
Some are paid annually and some are paid as needed because of a project.
You know what, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about item number fourteen, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. The revenue should outweigh the cost of the fee, as Mr. Alexander said, and I would, I would, I'm gonna go with Mr. Morrison and say, you know, maybe we should give the new city manager an opportunity to look at this, and if it doesn't work, then put it on the agenda at that time and move forward.
Okay. Outstanding. We put it off until, we put the fee increase in place January 1 last week, or, yeah, 10 days ago, to allow for that, or nine days ago, to allow for that. So these don't go into effect immediately, they go into effect January 1. He comes on October the 10th to allow for that review, but at any rate, I'm just being clear on that, too, okay? Before you make your judgment.
And I want to be clear that if our new city manager can lower costs, then I want to apply it to the tax rate, so that we, I want that tax rate down, and so if he can lower costs, I still want these fees where they are. I just want to be clear that the tax rate has to be down more.
Yeah, Mr. Alexander, that's the same position I take. I think you should be putting it on fees, lowering the tax rate, and reducing expenses. So I see the lowering of the tax rate and the reduction in expenses to allow you to lower the tax rate as the two key things that we should be doing, and I see this as applying the revenue, you know, the income comes from where the expenses are created, so I would just rather see tax policy rearranged here, that's more important to me.
And I'm with you on that, but the problem I've got with this is that we increased the expenses and...
Yeah, you see it as a timing issue as much as anything.
I see it as a horrible timing issue on this thing. I mean, we increased expenses...
It's a very fair, these are all fair positions to debate.
And I would love to see the tax rate go down and some of these fees that are specific on things, you know, adjusted accordingly. I know that, you know, James, for mowing a yard, for stuff, that's way too cheap. I mean, I know that stuff. There are some that definitely, truly, need to be addressed. I'm not saying that, it just, I want to see it as a big-picture item here of how we're going to address it in that whole composure of, you know, doing some swapping around of where the money comes from. I'm just afraid that we raise expenses, we cut the tax rate by this amount, we raise fees...
We raise the fees higher than we lower the tax rate.
We didn't do a whole lot, that's right. So what did we really do?
Well, it's a washout, or it's even more. I want to just add this, that if we can hold up for a little while longer, let the new leader come onboard and let him look at things, because, you know, when I hear that comparison and benchmark cities and comparison, compare, we don't have to do everything the Midland, Odessa, Abilene, Wichita Falls, whoever is out there is doing, you know, let's just hold up a little bit and just wait. Again, the timing, I think that that is very critical. I'm with you, Kendall, so I will go with that.
Okay. Okay, is there public input on this item? Come on.
Craig Myers, as I've listened to the budget process for a while, I've been troubled by one thing. I've heard, time and time again, we have to cut expenses. In a growing city, it seems to me that the starting point is, what is our job in providing services? And then you frugally, as efficiently and effectively as you can, operate with the minimum amount of burden on the population. But I haven't heard anybody talk about services, and if you talk about frugality, I can tell you that the impact of neighborhood revitalization indicates that you can do a whole lot of things a lot cheaper than you might do it otherwise. But also, we have worked with all the various departments who, if you look at them, these folks are providing services equal to or superior to any city that I've found, with less money, and many of the people incredibly underpaid, particularly in some departments, in regard to their professional status and what they deliver. And I think that what they have delivered has made San Angelo a better place downtown, in the Barrio, on the north side, in Lakeview, and a lot of different places, because they are delivering services. And, you know, when you just say, "Cut across the board," that is silly, and if you say, "I don't like measuring ourselves against Midland, Odessa, or, you know, whatever else," it seems to me that a couple of months is a very short time to measure ourselves against Eagle Pass, you know, because the person's standards of measurement have nothing, Eagle Pass and San Angelo are radically different communities and do business in a different way. And I don't know the ins and outs of the individual permit costs and the analysis that you've done, I assume some analysis has been done, but it does seem to me that somewhere, you look, first of all, at what the citizens deserve in terms of services, and then you determine a budget. And I'm hearing, you know, all through this, just the opposite, we've got to cut expenditures. Well, maybe not, you know, unless you say, "This is what we cut because it's wasteful, these people are inefficient, they're not delivering the appropriate services," then, yeah, cut. But I haven't heard, at least publicly, expression of where you failed, your staff has failed you dismally and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public input on this item? Come on.
Dwayne Edmondson, Yellow Checker Cab.
Go ahead and get a little closer to the mic for me, because it's hard to hear you. Okay, thank you.
Dwayne Edmondson with Yellow Checker Cab. I had 14 vehicles inspected this year for permits. It was two men over there, a little over two hours. So if you used to give them three hours, you know, for their travel time, too, I mean, that's $4,900, that equates to $816.67 an hour. You add a third person in there to take care of the administrative, it still comes up to $544.44 an hour. Your increase for the same number of vehicles would bring it up to a little over $7,000 in cost. These individuals continue to, you know, in the same, that's $1,183.33 an hour. With the third person, it comes up to $788.89 an hour. That's awful good pay. They're checking the same things that I check on a vehicle twice a month. There's no way I could afford to pay someone that kind of money to inspect my vehicles and check those items, you know, not that kind of money.
Right, it's an annual fee...
Yes, sir.
And it would go, give me the, instead of the hourly rates, I'd like to hear the totals again, if you don't mind.
Right now, it's $4,900.
$4,900 would become?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one hundred.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's the question I have. Do y'all have questions for the gentleman? Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there other public input on the item? Okay, it's clear what the positions are. There's a motion on the table, or there's a motion before us on items eight through fourteen to disallow, I mean, it's a second reading...
Postpone indefinitely.
Right, to postpone indefinitely, okay. Items eight through fourteen, okay. We voted them through, nine days ago, we voted them through with a January the 1 effective date, so there'd be time for review and those kinds of things, and there are several positions being staked out, and they're all, they're fine. Some are just thinking it's not the right way to bring money into the city, some are thinking it's bad timing on bringing the money into the city. I see it as better tax policy, so I think it's better to do this and lower property taxes, so just a lot of different positions. Anyway, we've made our minds...
May I just ask a question, make sure that we're following the law on this thing? Do we, is that a correct motion, or do we actually have to vote as they were voted last time? A vote of yea or nay against how it was voted last time?
This is a reconsideration, then. It's a second hearing in consideration, so go ahead and articulate the item...
He's... See what I'm saying?
To postpone.
I just want to make sure we take this the legal way, that...
Mr. Morrison's motion is that we postpone indefinitely, I guess, under consideration, that we postpone indefinitely the adoption of the fee schedule changes in items eight through fourteen, okay?
Indefinitely forever, right?
Means it's not defined. So it could be whenever.
Okay.
And Mr. Silvis has seconded that motion, okay?
That's fine.
So we're good?
We'll call for the vote, then. All those in favor of postponing items eight through fourteen indefinitely, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Or nay.
It's four to three to postpone. It's Mr. Hurstfeld, Mr. Adams, Mr. Silvis, and Mr. Morrison vote to postpone. Ms. Farmer, Mr. Alexander, and myself voted to try to go ahead and implement, okay?
Mayor.
Let's go to item seven.
Mayor, one thing. My computer's all messed up, so if Nathan's listening, Nathan, please come fix my computer.
There you go.
Okay, Mayor, the item that wasn't included in this group was item seven.
Number seven, I was going to ask.
I just got through moving us to it.
I just wanted to make sure.
I was going to ask about that, number seven.
Right.
Okay. Okay, on item number seven, this was the second hearing in consideration of adoption of an ordinance amending Appendix A on the Code of Ordinances regarding utility-related fees. Mr. Morrison, I get an idea that you really would like to see that just motioned to approve and move forward, is that correct?
Number seven.
You accidentally pulled it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve seven as presented. Let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move to the regular agenda. This is item number 16, good morning. Consideration of adopting a resolution implementing drought level three of the city's water conservation and drought contingency plan. We have a presentation by our Water Utilities Director, Will Wildy.
Mayor and Council, we're bringing to you today...
Excuse me, is it possible to asset the volume at the microphone at the podium? Be turned up.
Is there a way to turn the volume up? Brian, is there a way to turn the volume up at the podium? Okay, let's see there, Mr. Wildy.
What we have for your consideration today, the item concerning our water supply status, to quickly review on September 14th and evaluation of that status. The trigger point was met for drought level three, and what that trigger point was is evaluating the amount of water available to the city against the needs of the city over the next 12 months. There was not adequate supply to meet those needs. It does not mean we're going to run out of water, it just states that the needs exceed the supply over that time period. So in meeting that trigger point, then, puts into motion the requirements within the city ordinance in the water conservation, water supply management plan for the city is to, the next step is then to present this information to the council for your consideration of adoption of a resolution which will formally then implement the provisions of the city code. That resolution is brought to you today, and within that resolution, there are two key dates. First of all, the first date is October 1, is proposed to be the effective date for implementation of drought level three, the water management stage within ours code there. On that date, then, all the provisions within the code would become effective. The second date is November 1, would be the effective date to include within the billing the surcharges, the additional fees that become effective with drought level three. Under drought level three, the additional provisions that would become effective, first of all, concerning use of outside water for watering of lawns, gardens, landscape areas, trees, golf courses, shrubs, any other type of plants being grown outdoors would be prohibited. Use of city water that either is treated or raw city water would come into that category. The only exception of this, the ordinance does allow the council to permit hand-watering or use of drip irrigation for watering of trees or the foundations around buildings, and the council could allow that at certain times and certain days. The other provision within the ordinance, the restrictions that would come into effect would be the filling, the refilling or the maintenance of any swimming pool or fountain of any kind, any type of ornamental fountain would be prohibited to use city water for that purpose, or the washing of vehicles, automobiles, trucks, any type of vehicles, except those as determined by the Director of the Health Department, which would need washing for public health, safety, and welfare. Those would be the only ones permitted for washing. As far as the additional fees that would come into effect, on November 1, residential accounts for any usage over 10,000 gallons in a month, an additional fee of $6 per 1,000 gallons would be assessed. For apartment units, an additional fee of $5 per 1,000 gallons for all usage over 3,000 gallons applied per apartment unit. And then all other accounts, commercial, industrial, any other type of coding in there would see a fee increase of $2.50 per 1,000 gallons, beginning at the initial usage there. Then to quickly just resummarize the dates, then, September 14, the trigger point was met. Today is the day for consideration of adopting the resolution to implement drought level three. October 1, effective date for the provisions of the code, then, and November 1 for inclusion of the additional rates in the billing cycle.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the gentleman?
First question is, I thought we had to have two readings, and this would be October 16, because when we grant...
Resolution.
Exceptions, but in our discussions, though, when we grant exceptions, it looks like drought level three will go into effect before the exceptions go into effect.
Exceptions. Go ahead.
The resolution is in effect now, and there can be two readings on the exceptions. Go ahead. See, that was approved here. Okay, well, go ahead and...
The provision of the code being amended to allow the council to consider exceptions was part of the consent agenda you approved this morning. That is now in effect. There's one public notice, that will be in the paper tomorrow for that, that's all that's required on that, so the council, at this point in time, then, can consider those exceptions at the meeting today.
And so, one meeting takes one meeting to grant exceptions?
That's what they just said. Yes, because it's related to the resolution and because it's, you've been given authority under the ordinance to make exceptions.
Right, the exceptions are not an ordinance, the authority is granted in an ordinance.
Right, so because it's a resolution and because it is what the ordinance tells you to do, you're now acting under the ordinance, you're not creating a new ordinance, and that's the reason why you could go ahead and make exceptions as you move, as opposed to through two readings. Did that make sense?
Good. The second thing is, we implemented drought level two in June, and that was with 18 months of water left. We would presumably, at that time, enact drought level three in, well, December 1, in December, that's six months later, maybe November, but so are we using water faster than we projected?
As far as the usage rates were down this summer compared to last year, the biggest variable in projecting, any kind of water supply projections, is the evaporation rate. Evaporation this summer was fairly normal through about mid-July, July and through August, we saw evaporation rates more than double of what you would normally expect, so that is really the acceleration factor on why we're entering this at this point in time.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Morrison?
Right up, bud.
Yes, sir.
We spoke about this, we've been speaking about this for the last six weeks, and the date that we had agreed on... date that we had agreed on for, for drought level three was October sixteen. So, we, are we getting away from that now? Have we made a proposal to the public and now we're pulling it back two weeks?
You could, you could make a change to this resolution if you were so inclined, Mr. Morrison.
Well, I think since we have been saying October sixteen for the last three meetings, we need to stick with what we said and not, not change. Also, Will, when the Lord sends us rain, which he will, how long's it gonna take you to, when we have runoff, how long's it gonna take you to go from three back to two?
The council will have to make that determination. We'll bring it to the next available meeting when we can schedule after your review.
Okay, the, under the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, but under the ordinance, the way it works is when his fact gathering says we're in drought level two, drought level stage two, he's required to come to the council and say, "The data says we're no longer in three, we're in two." And so, you guys, here we are, we're in two. And it would then be incumbent on us to say, "Okay, let's go back to drought stage two."
Kendall, I don't agree.
Okay, well, that's, so then let's go through that.
Yeah, I don't agree because if, the way I had, and I've gotta find it here where...
Well, we've already done this. We went from one to two to one to two.
Yeah, I've got that.
And that was, when we went from two back to one, Will did it on his own. And we said, "Next time we won't have saying that."
Let me find what I'm saying.
Okay.
What I, because I believe when we had gone into drought level two, what, the second time? Didn't we go in and out?
Yes. That's correct.
Anyway, when we went in the second time, when I was reading that ordinance, it, it said it had to come back for council because you pulled it off of drought level two as per, was defined in the ordinance. And I believe when I saw the, the revised one, it did not...
Is this what you're looking for? Water Utilities Director shall, shall notify, manage the city council upon any threshold drought levels. Council shall implement the stage by resolution?
Yes, I think that's it.
Go to two oh three, subtitle B.
Isn't that what I said? That's what I just said.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is.
Okay, if you're looking at the resolution that we're, that we're gonna pass here, item number four, "When the available water supply rises above the trigger points for drought level three stage, the Director of Water Utilities may recommend to the city council termination of drought level three stage status and return to drought level two stage status or other recommendation." That does not say an automatic.
No, that's what I just said.
I apologize.
I said, "When it goes," it's okay, it's okay. It's, that's, this stuff gets everybody a little tense, but what I'm saying is, when the, when his data says, "We are now back in drought stage level two," okay? He then brings it to council and says, see what, so you do agree?
I'm in agreement with what you're saying.
All right.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I was hearing the other way around.
All right, but that's what, like I said, this stuff makes people a bit tense, but, but that's exactly what happens is when, when his data says, "It's rained enough, there's been enough runoff, whatever, we're gonna go, we should go back to drought stage two," he comes back to council and presents that data.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
That's what I said.
Agreed. I'm with you there.
All right. Okay.
Roger.
All right, so, but, but, so, Mr. Morrison, when it rains, he would come back and say, "It has rained, there's this much water here, we, we're not in three anymore, or at least the data says we shouldn't be in three anymore, we're now back in two," and we would have that discussion.
We're dealing with people's lives here. This is very, very serious. I don't want a two or a three week delay when, when these boys could be washing cars again that we have stopped. I don't want them to have to wait two or three weeks until it can come to us, but if that's, I guess that's the way it is, that's the way it is, but...
Oh, I think it, it would warrant a special council meeting to get it, get us out of there.
And I would go for that.
But, on this, this deal where we can get into drought level three, October first, to me, we're, we're dealing with people's jobs, and some people are gonna be out of jobs, and we, we, well, they deserve a two week notice, so to speak.
Okay, again, you're speaking to wanting to make a change, and it could be done through a motion.
I mean, at least two weeks from now on the effective date.
I understand you. You, you could make a motion change that you want the resolution, but you want the date to be, I mean, you've, you've got room there if you need to. Ms. Farmer?
First of all, Will, when you first started talking, you were talking about what triggered, what people could do in stage two, and you referred to drip irrigation. Now, in, looking back at my notes from the meeting that we had with Harold in March and worked on the change for foundations and trees to be hand-watered, we specifically used the word soaker hose. Soaker hose to some people is the same as drip irrigation, and to others, it is not. And somehow, somewhere in the ordinance, the word soaker hose got admitted. Is that oversight or was that intentional on your part? And I have some follow-ups.
As far as that, I'd have to go, I don't have the ordinance, but it may be defined where we, we define what drip irrigation includes, and it could be included in that if it's not.
Well, I wanna, I wanna make sure that soaker hoses is included because a lot of times you talk to various experts about foundations specifically, and drip is not necessarily what is best for home and business foundations. Soaker hoses is. We listened to the gentleman who is a irrigation specialist, and he stated again that that soaker hose should be placed so many inches away from the foundation. And our whole purpose here was to definitely prevent mass damage all across the city for split foundations, and that's a very possibility. So, I, I want a housekeeping on the word soaker hose in there. And then the other comment I wanted to make to the council with reference to the drought. First of all, the young lady who spoke this morning, the fees are associated with the drought level stages, not the regular fees. And I, I hope she understands that difference. If not, I encourage her to get with Mr. Wildey or the Water Department to explain the different fees in the different stages of the drought. The other thing is, I spent quite a bit of time yesterday afternoon with, talking to John Begno, who I consider an expert on this business of water, and I'm going to quote John, and I told him I was going to quote him today. "It's over." According to John, our drought is over. We, it is going to rain. He can't tell us what day, but he was wondering if the city might want to take into consideration that even though where we are in available water out there, Will, and, and talking about the, the car washes and their use of, maybe if they were cut off tomorrow and all these people are without jobs, we might save a half a day of water in a twelve-month period. That's all we would save. I'm wondering if we're going to be just a little premature in stage three at today's point. The evaporation, the temperatures and the heats have ceased to be what they were. The outside watering has ceased to be what it is because of the time of year. It just seems to be like it's a little late, and I talked with this, about with John Begno, it's a little late to go to stage three now when we should be really looking at spring at the available needs of, of the city. I'm just asking for some feedback on that thought as the timing of the year.
Okay, I'm gonna give you some. My, my thought process is that item number sixteen resolves that we are in drought stage level three based on the data. We are. I'd like us to be data-driven in what we do, okay? So that it's very clear to the citizens that we do things as, as the data presents itself under the constraints we have, because some of the things are, about the data are difficult to take. You don't get to count the fact that you should have Hickory Aqua for water, and you're saying you have twelve months' worth of water when we really don't think that's exactly true and so forth. Nonetheless, it's because items seventeen and eighteen and nineteen and twenty allow us to, to allow exceptions. And so, I'm very comfortable going into drought stage level three because we are doing it in an incremental way if we can approve the different exceptions that are about to follow, okay? We're about to be able to say, "Look, there's no reason to shut down these car washes yet" for the very reasons, Ms. Farmer, that you and Mr. Begno are talking about. That, you know, evaporation will be a much smaller concern going through the winter months. We should have an update from the CRMWD about Lake Ivy that should happen, their, their work's supposed to happen in December, their update should be in January. I think we should allow all of these exceptions to take place until the end of February. And then, just to the point you just made, we would talk again in the latter part of January and through February about what we want to do effective March first about the spring and summer, which is what really matters.
Yes.
So, I think we should implement drought stage three because that's what the data says. But then I think we should allow these exceptions that we're about to have a chance to read and, and look at through the end of February, and then tackle spring and summer, which is really where we, where we need to spend our work, and with updated data from the CRMWD. So, I hope that was what you were after.
I think we should go with...
Mr. Adams?
I'm sorry, I think we should go with, were you finished?
Go ahead.
I think we should go with the October sixteenth date. I also, I've, I've received phone calls from people who've been here a lot longer than I have, and they said, "Look, we've been here before, it's going to rain. Noah said it was gonna rain, but it took a hundred and twenty-five years for it to happen, and that's what scares me. I know it's gonna rain, but we don't know when." So, I would like to see us be very aggressive in our dealings with these exceptions as we move forward with this res- with this resolution, and be mindful of the fact. Also, we have to plan for the unexpected. We ran into some problems with Hickory when we were a few weeks back with, with some rock, and it took us a little longer to make the, the progress that we had expected. Now, something like that could happen again. Before, we had a red light that went down and we, it took us forever to get it replaced, I would have been confident, we're saying, "Well, you know what, we can make up for lost time." But, you know, now I'm saying, if something happens and we can't make up the time, then, then what happens? I think it's folly to assume we'll get, we'll get Hickory here before we actually run out of water. We need to plan for the worst and expect the best.
All right, thank you. Listen, I, I believe we've, we've heard enough that I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the resolution effective October the sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, implementing drought stage level three. I have a second for Mr. Hurstfeld.
Any clarification? Are you gonna, are the surcharges and the bills gonna start November first in your, in your motion? You, you adopted the effective date, but what about, when do the bills reflect?
Okay, Mr. Alexander, it's better for me to ask Mr. Wildey and Mr. Dane what, what I just did instead of telling you, okay?
We, we prefer the beginning of the cycle, so we would prefer a, a beginning of the month, whatever month you choose.
It would still be November the first that the surcharges would go into effect. Okay?
Okay, so they wouldn't get billed, and since it's in arrears, it would be the December bill.
Mr. Wildey?
Is that what you're saying, Michael?
First time, I would pay more.
Is that correct?
Under what he said, October first, he might have been thinking it was the October usage, the November bill in arrears. With what I just did, did I take that to December?
And that, that's what we need to know, whatever date you want the rates to be adjusted on, which could be if, if we, the way it's proposed right now is no, the bills that would come out in November would have the additional surcharge on it.
Which means usage in October would be inclusive, would include the surcharges.
Well, obviously, if you make it effective on the sixteenth, that's confusing as hell.
Why don't you make it easier and just do November one? I mean, what's another...
And I could support that. Just wait till November, just put it off one month.
They're saying the, the drought level three effective date, November one, is what they're saying. I know what they're saying. Okay.
Okay. I don't think I can...
Well, since it's paid in arrears, the effective date that it's saying there, October one, but you would not see that bill in your, because it's paid in arrears, you would not see it until your November one bill.
You're correct.
That's what you're proposing.
Yeah, no, but I guess I, I, I'm going to rescind my motion because I'm not going to put something in place that causes this to go all the way to December before we start paying attention to it. I, in other words, if I make it October the sixteenth, which is what I'm hearing council wanting to do, if I make it October the sixteenth, but then they bill November the first for October usage, people are sitting there going, "Okay, it's in effect October sixteenth," but they're being billed for water they used...
Fifteen days in the old rate and sixteen days...
Well, and they wouldn't be billed.
You'd just make it more confusing if you do it at the middle of the month.
Right, and I don't want to postpone until November the first, okay? I want, so I guess, you know, I'm, in other words, given those choices, I'd rather make it effective October first and move on. If, and I don't think they would bill half and half. I don't think you're able to do that.
No, that makes...
See what I'm saying? They're just getting one reading for the month, Ms. Farmer, so they can't really bill half and half. They've, we've gotta give them something they can do. And so, I'm, I'm not gonna go with the sixteenth and then make it December on November usage, and I'm not gonna go to November first because I don't wanna keep kicking this can down the road. The data says we're in drought, drought stage level three, so I'm gonna rescind my motion, okay?
But we said October sixteenth because that was the date we had originally given.
Well, the reason we said October sixteenth is because we thought we had to do two readings to put this thing in place.
I'll, I'll make it easy since I voted against all that kicking the can down the road last time. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with an October first effective date, a November first surcharge inclusion on the bills. So, that would mean all water used in October would be under the new rate schedule. Then we have some exceptions coming in front of us, so, okay? So, I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have further discussion?
Yes, I, I would like clarification. Will, can you go back a couple of slides? On the hand-watering and the, the tree, okay, now, just because we're going to implement this doesn't mean that folks aren't going to go beyond their, you know, the, the numbers that we have there, the ten thousand gallons or... I, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is I'm concerned if, if we were, if we are on the edge of going into this drought level three, I mean, we're there. You know, I think what concerns me is when I hear in the conversation we had yesterday, you and I, Tom Kerr was sitting there with you, but when we're selling two hundred thousand gallons a month to this transport company, you know, that, that concerns me. So, where does that fall in this place? Are we gonna just stop that service, you know, this water transport of, you know, two hundred thousand gallons a month? That's, that's what, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned about us doing that, knowing that we are running out. So, where does that, a company like that fall in? Is it the commercial, just, and it's an, I believe that they sell it to an oil company, and they've got bukues of money so they can afford, so that two fifty over the, the amount, it's not gonna dent, put a dent in their pocketbook? So, services like that will stop or, or what?
As far as the restrictions or the additional provisions are as defined, you see right here, it only applies to these particular applications, either washing of vehicles, swimming pools, yard watering. Commercial usage of other types are not regulated under this part of, of the ordinance at this point in time. So, if there was a desire on the council's part to look at those, we would need to define those and, and include them in, in the ordinance in some manner.
Well, if, if Mr. Silvis has an idea, he wants some restriction, wouldn't we be allowed to do that under that next item, number seventeen? In other words, seventeen is, item seventeen where council, we will consider council's opinion about granting exceptions, they could also grant more restrictive or impose more restrictive language than the ordinance currently has in it. Is that true?
That's correct.
And I was about, I was about to say, maybe I'm jumping the gun because we are coming up on the next item, but I just wanted to throw that out there. When, when I hear of services like that, that we're selling water to some outfit out there, that heaven knows whether they take their water for fracking or whatever they use it for, but two hundred thousand gallons, three hundred thousand gallons a month, my gosh, you would think that, hey, our citizens need that. Why are we giving it away or, just because, like one staff member said, hey, they pay their bill on, on time, but that doesn't make it any better for us, you know? So, just keep that in consideration. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Mr. Morrison?
Well, I've got a real problem. We've been saying for the last three meetings, October sixteenth, it's been printed in the paper, it's been put on the television, and it's been out there for our public, and that is what they're thinking about. And now for us to come back at this meeting and take two weeks away, that this, we are taking people's livelihoods, we are killing jobs, this is a, this is, I've, I've laid awake for the la- I've laid awake at night worrying about this, and I am not going to vote to take two weeks away from my people. I might vote to give them two more weeks so they can prepare. I could go November one, but I'm not gonna support October one. but I'm not gonna support October 1. That's not fair to the public.
Okay. I'd rather do the exceptions.
You know, I just try to come up with solutions that are win-win, and the solution is to publicize that the surcharges for drought level three come effective the first day of your billing period in October, so your water usage is being counted, your first day of your billing period, but the enforcement starts October 16th. That's the first day of drought level three. Your billing surcharges come effective, you have to look at your own bill. When do they bill you? And you know, and that day, for me, it's the 24th of October. I know that day, and that's when my water usage is being billed at the higher surcharge rate. So that's for me. Everybody's different. But that October 16th, drought level three becomes effective. That is, that is what I will vote for. If it's something else, I'll vote against it because that is possible, and you have to give two weeks' notice to your employees that they're about to lose their job. It's fair. That's what's fair. And so we can do this with a November 1 billing cycle start, and we can start our drought level three October 16th successfully if it's worded the correct way in our releases and the way the Standard Times and KLST say this. The first day of your billing period in October is your start on the surcharges. The first day of drought level three is October 16th.
Well, I think you're parsing it a little too finely for me.
But that gets the job done to where people get their two-week notice, and that is, that is very important.
I understand. I don't, I don't think that's quite right. In other words, if my billing date is October the 4th, okay, and you say it starts October the 16th, then how can you bill me from the 4th through the 16th at new rates that aren't effective until the 16th?
Because we're allowed to, under drought level three, to start on November 1 billing at drought level three rates.
But you haven't put drought level three into play, you haven't put drought level three into play until October 16th.
But the billing period, November 1st, that computer looks at your usage in November and says, "I'm billing drought level three usage rates," and it does it. It's automatic. It's, it works. And so you know to slow down on your water usage, but at least somebody who cannot continue to operate after the 16th can give their employees two weeks' notice.
Okay. Okay, I just can't quite follow you.
It works, and I know it may be confusing. That's for Anthony Wilson and the news reporters to figure out how to word that just right, but there's a way to figure that out, and it's fair to the employees that are affected.
What's fair to the employees is for us to give the exceptions that allow those positions.
Well, hopefully, we cover everybody, but I don't think we will. I think there's still gonna be people out of work.
Okay. I have a motion to accept as presented, which is an October 1 implementation of drought level three, November 1 present implementation of the rates on water bills. And so do I have public input on this item?
And just as a note, we've been talking about this since July.
Well, and it became effective in September.
I know, but we.
The data said we entered.
That's right. This was brought, this was on an agenda item that we wanted to discuss back in July, so.
Thank you. Mr.?
Greg Myers. The bad news is that whatever you vote on, there's gonna be a lot of very irate people that are gonna be ticked out. The good news is that you won the election that allowed you the privilege of voting on this. And one of the reasons that I think that that's kind of important is because every time you have an issue where there's significant difference of opinion, it generally comes down to making the balance between the public good and individual rights and individual concerns. It's true with the flag, I mean, the sign ordinance, it's true with garage sales, et cetera. The difference in this is that it becomes apparent that the public well-being overrides, you know, individual concerns when you're at a crisis point. This isn't some people think this, some people think that. It's everybody has to realize that water is a public commodity owned by all the people, and even if you can afford surcharges and things, you're gonna have to confine yourself to certain restrictions. And we feel entitled to use our water as we ought to. We have good reasons. We've got beautiful trees. We've got lawns we've invested in, and we've got businesses. One of the things I'd like to ask of the council, because when this is all over, a really significant community-wide crisis, the community's gonna look one or two ways. Either people who disagree with each other are gonna have half the folks feeling that they've been jerked around and taken advantage of, and the other that those people who feel entitled are using up my water and are being irresponsible. And on the other hand also, you've got the people that are going to enforce this are going to represent you, and they're either going to make you the enemy, or people are gonna say these are people who fairly represented the needs of the community as the council has involved that. And I'd ask just one thing, and that is, when you're through deciding, and you guys have debated a long time, I think you've been very responsible, you've taken into consideration the individual concerns and the exceptions. You may not all agree, but I think you've done a very, very difficult job in an incredibly complex situation. But one of the things I would ask is that after you vote, you take responsibility personally to your constituents for what you voted on. It has been a tendency in this council, and I think all councils, when there's differences of opinion and decisions have been made, and you get complaints, and they're going to roll in, and you get complaints that somebody's been unfairly treated, that you bring those individual or those handful of concerns and telephone calls to the council for public business. When complaints, if there is illegitimate use of power by the people who are enforcing this, that you handle that administratively. Otherwise, you're setting up the people who have a most difficult job are gonna be cussed out, are gonna be called all kinds of names because they're citing people for doing what you folks decide it has to be done as the enemy. They're, your employees doing what you decide, and I think it's just really prudent and it's responsible that when these complaints come in, rather than showing your constituents that you listen to them, you know, on television and in public, you handle it administratively because that's really where you handle individual complaints. And you stand together in public behind whatever you decide. That's going to determine whether or not, when all this is over, people feel they've been treated fairly, that you've made a consistent and coherent decision and you've stood by it, and the people who are going to represent you do make determinations that are sometimes difficult, but they're not gonna have to pay the price of standing out there alone, out on a limb. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment on the item?
Jack Edison, Quicksand Golf Course. As I'm looking at your marquees up there, I understand that golf courses will not be exempt from this watering. Is that correct?
There's an exemption item, number 17, which is the next agenda item. One of the specific things on that is the greens on golf courses.
Okay. In the past, we've had some negative publicity, misquotes in the paper, several things. I need to bring you up to date really on Quicksand's water supply and how it works.
Are you talking about for an exemption?
I want to clarify this, whether Quicksand is going to be involved with this exemption or not.
Okay. Here's my, here's my general request, okay? It is, right now, all we're talking about is a resolution to adopt drought stage level three or not, okay? The next agenda item will be about exemptions, including for golf courses. So just make sure.
This has nothing to do with an exemption.
Attaboy. Let's go ahead and listen.
Okay. Most of you are not familiar with the fact that any water rights that we use from the river, which we own, has no bearing whatsoever on the city's water supply, none whatsoever. Our division point, for those of you who don't know what that is, that's when we take water from the river, when the water master allows us to, is one mile east of the city limits, on, east of our place. So any water that we would pull from the river at that time with the water master allowing this would do nothing to deplete the city water supply, absolutely nothing, because it's already past your points and we, nothing, you could never get it back anyhow.
Well, and we don't control it.
That's correct. That's correct. Now, at the present time, we have reservoirs that we use when we are filling them, or we have, also have a well supply, which we are filling our reservoirs with. It's my understanding that Supreme Court says if you have groundwater, then you own that groundwater. I'm, in my way of thinking, if we're using our well water, we would not be subject to any rules that council would make as far as city water is concerned.
We agree.
Okay. Now, let me assure you that we will be very, very selective on how we water, but we know we're gonna get a lot of negative publicity that Quicksand is watering when they shouldn't be.
Okay.
I just want, I just want to bring that to council's attention.
Okay, very good. The, but we understand clearly that the water master determines what comes out of the river, okay? And we also understand clearly that our ordinance only discusses what happens with the city's water, what the water the city provides. And so if you're pumping water out of a well, that's not, that's not our purview. And if you're taking water out of the river under your rights as adjudicated, or not adjudicated, but as, as allowed through the water master system, whatever we do here doesn't affect that. So, you know, I guess the main thing you're doing is from a public relations standpoint saying, "Look, when you see the sprinklers going, it's not necessarily city water."
No, and we will put signs out saying, "Well, water, so on and so forth," but we just, we just want to make sure that, that council understood that we were using our own water. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Other public comment? Okay. I have a motion on the table. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Mayor, my name is Clementine Yarista, and I'm wanting to share a concern, because we're talking about stage water level three and so forth, and I'm not sure who the water master is, but my concern on the water master is, does he also allow or does he control the water that's being pulled out of the Concho River from the people, the residents that live, like on South Park? All their lawns are like super, super green, and they've got pumps that they can pump as much water as they want 24 hours a day. Is there any restrictions on them? And that's just one small portion that I look at because I live in the Santa Rita district. What is the take on that, that they can pull as much water as they want since they've got the water pumps on the back lots of their, of their homes?
So the answer to your question is, the TCEQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, is the, the judge, the group that takes care of those issues, okay? And that's who we're referring to as the water masters, okay? Their offices are in the state building right over here on, on Oaks Street.
Next to Fort Concho.
Right next to Fort Concho, just north of Fort Concho on Oaks Street. And that's the group that, that talks about what you can and can't do out of the river, okay? The city of San Angelo has certain rights to water, for instance, that's in Lake Nazworthy, and allows raw water meters and water to be pumped out of the, out of the lake using raw water, which is better for the citizens because it doesn't get treated and the cost driven up and then redistributed and used. But under drought stage level three, that's no longer allowed, okay? So the part that the city has any input on are the ones that are metered and that are part of the city's allocation, okay? The ones that are, that have a straw, if you want to look at it that way, into the river are not managed by the city. They're managed by the water master at the TCEQ. And so if you have a concern there, that's the person you want to let know so they can take a look at it, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, come on.
My name is Glenda Harbert, and I just want to thank you all for all the hard work that you do, have gotten elected to do. I'm impressed, and I've learned a lot just sitting here this time and watching, when I'm having sleepless nights, watching you all during the middle of the night. I think I want to piggyback on what Mr. Myers said, that those people who enforce these well-needed water restrictions be backed up and supported. They end up being the messengers who often get shot, and so I just encourage y'all to, encourage them and also to give them the support that they need.
Super. Thank you. Other public input? Okay. I have a motion and a second to accept this as presented. It's item number 16, just adopting the resolution. Let me go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I have one, two, three, four ayes. I have one, two, three nays. So I have Ms. Farmer, Mr. Hurstfeld, Mr. Adams, and myself in favor. I have Mr. Silves, Mr. Morrison, and Mr. Alexander opposed. Okay? Okay, item number 17. Okay. It's 10:30. We'll come back at 10:45, please. Order, it's 10:45. I do have a quorum, and so we'll move forward with item number 17. This is the consideration of granting exceptions as outlined under the Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan. This comes under section 11.204 of the exception and variance part of the ordinance. It's a presentation by our Water Utilities Director, Will Wilde.
With the action this morning of the council, the ordinance now is in place that would allow the council to streamline the approval of exceptions to any of the provisions within the Water Conservation Drought Contingency Plan. Prior to this, those exceptions had to be handled through a written submittal process with, through staff, and then that subsequently brought to council. So with the ordinance in place now, it greatly expedites that and allows the council flexibility to readily address items that may come up. So this morning now, we're bringing, re-bringing to you those requests that had been brought up at previous meetings and those that we have, as staff, received through our offices here. The procedure on this, as these items will be brought up, we'll review the exception request itself and look at any particular conditions that the council may want to include with that exception request. And then, just by a simple majority of the vote, is the exception can be enacted then by the council, and it would be effective upon action then. The exceptions that we have previously looked at include the vehicle washing provision, swimming pools, fountains, I would include with swimming pool considerations there, the golf course greens, nurseries, and then we also had a request from Goodfell Air Force Base on their kennel area. To go into then, the specific requests we've had then, we'll start with the vehicle washing one. Vehicle washing under the drought level three is prohibitive. The type of facilities that could be considered an exception here would be those in the commercial vehicle washing area, anything from the handheld, one-type operations, the in-bay automatic where you'll drive in and stop, and the machines go around your car, the tunnel automatic-type facilities, and also those which are mobile facilities where operators may go around and wash cars at locations. In addition to those, you also would have the commercial fleet-type operations where businesses may have their own washing facilities at their locations, such as, a good example would be the rental car place at the airport where they maintain their own vehicles at that location, washing of those type of vehicles by a particular business. The other type of vehicle washing would be residential washing, where an individual at their, their home may use either a handheld hose or a bucket of some type to wash and clean their vehicle. So just in general, we want to make sure we cover, if we're talking vehicle washing, all the different types that could be out there. Within our billing system, we've gone through the commercial accounts and identified 18 different accounts that have meter, water meters serving them. With only 18 accounts, so that doesn't say there's only 18 facilities. This is just, as an example, say Stripes has numerous facilities around town for washing vehicles, but they're listed as one account within our billing system there. The total water usage over the last 12 months for these, these accounts was 48.4 million gallons for that entire 12-month billing period. And then now, the consideration of any type of exception for vehicle washing then, would the exception apply to residential, to the different type of commercials, any requirement for recycling of water within the washing operations, any surcharge exceptions, and then the duration of that exception. So with those just ideas, the thoughts that are out there, I'll open it up for the council then deliberation.
Okay. I think just, Mr. Wilde, if you don't mind, let's go ahead and see the whole presentation and then come back and look at the individual items, just so they've got an idea of everything we're talking about.
All right. We'll go through the different ones. And the next one, swimming pools. Based upon the information that we've been able to pull together, there's approximately 1,100 pools within the city. Round numbers, about 1,000 of those are residential, about 1, Round numbers, about 1,000 of those are residential, about 100 of those are commercial-type facilities. Average pool size, from the information we've obtained from the, the last meetings, is about a 16 by 32 size is the average for a pool. Average water use on a pool, again, based upon the, the experts who provided this, is on an annual basis, about one and one-half inches per week of water is needed to maintain the level of a pool. Obviously, that's going to be more in the summertime, less in the wintertime, but looking at an annual basis, one and a half, one and a half inches. How does that relate then to the size pool? About 1,900 gallons per month it takes to maintain the average pool then. For an entire year then, for the 1,100 pools, is about 27.4 million gallons per year for, for the operation of pools. The next one.
Just based on evaporation, right? Oops.
Just based on evaporation.
The inch and a half is based upon what may be lost to evaporation, to splash out, and probably to the backwashing also, that, the water.
So it's all of that?
All of that would be coming into consideration.
Could you, Will, could you go back to the last slide for a moment, please? Right there. Those, where do we get that, that estimated water needed to maintain pools in the city? That 24, 27.4 million?
27.4 million is just the, the calculation of the 1,915 gallons per week for an entire year, over 1,100 pools, just the straight multiplication of the numbers.
Okay, so last year, did we know what that number was?
As far as the exact number, we don't, because we don't have any separate meter. It's, it's an estimated number based upon these criteria.
Just so that I understand where we're going, if, if those numbers were from last year, that would be included in that 48 million gallons you just, you just gave, right? It wouldn't be in addition to?
It would be in addition to, sir.
Okay.
Car washes, 48 million gallons, pools, 27 million gallons. So you're adding them up?
Okay, I got you.
Right, they're separated.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding. Thanks.
Golf courses, the entire golf course, including green areas, is not allowed to be watered under drought level three. Two courses that do rely upon city water for significant portions of their water, the Santa Fe Golf Course downtown, and the Riverside Golf Course, Santa Fe using, treated city water, Riverside using the raw city water. A total of 27 greens at these two particular courses. Watering requirements on golf course greens varies quite a bit throughout the year. Based on the information we, we received from the Santa Fe Course, from September through October, the requirement for the total of the 27 greens between the two courses would be about 150,000 gallons. November through February, 300,000 gallons. March through April, about a million gallons. As you can see, it starts, it's starting to increase as we get into that warmer summertime weather. And then finally, through the summer season, June through August, about 1.95 million gallons. So 3.4 million gallons is the estimate, estimated water needs for golf courses, these, these two courses, Santa Fe, which has nine greens, Riverside, which has 18 greens for, for an entire year to maintain the, the green areas. Nurseries, types of nurseries can be classified into two different areas. First of all, indoor nurseries would be those where typically the, the stock within the nursery is a seasonal type materials, plants that are in containers, they may be in ball and burlap type operations also, or even temporary holding beds where they're healed in for resale out of those type of areas. These are generally, they're short period of time, watering is done usually with the handheld hose or some type of container, or even with drip systems on, on a lot of the nurseries nowadays. The outdoor nurseries, there's one facility that we know of here in San Angelo, where they do actually grow the plants, grow the trees, that they then transfer into their, their retail operations, so that, that is the, the other classification for those. Five full-time nursery operations have been identified within, within the city here over the 12 months. The indoor nurseries, the water usage from those five was 8.6 million gallons. The one outdoor nursery had a usage of 17.8 million gallons. The next one, the final item we would have in there, is the Goodfellow Air Force Base request. Within the base operations, they, they have the military dog trainings, and military dogs that they use in, in their operations there. We've had a request from them to be able to water within their kennel area, the grassed area where the dogs are, are kept, and they're about a, an area of about 130 by 145 feet in size, to water that through the summer months, March through October, with an annual, with a monthly water requirement of 65,000 gallons per month during that time period. No watering request from November through, through February. That, that includes all the, the requests we had, sir. Now you want to go back and start to go through each one?
Yes, sir, please. Okay, at a winter time usage rate of roughly 9 million gallons, correct?
That's correct.
Per day, right?
Per day, yes.
Okay, so at a winter time, so this kind of October, November, December, January, February, March type of timing, typical usage would be, not for the whole city, 9 million gallons per day. So this car wash facility operation, annual usage, if we stopped that, we're saving roughly five or six days of water, okay? Is what you're talking about. On the pools, 27 million gallons is basically three days of water for the city. On the golf courses, the Riverside and Santa Fe Greens, 3.4 million gallons would be roughly one-third to one-half of a day of water for the city. And the nurseries, at 26.4 million gallons all combined, would be roughly three days of water for the city. And the Goodfellow Air Force Base, at 800,000 gallons, would be, I mean, just negligible. I mean, it, it's not, it doesn't make a meter. It, for a year, 65,000 a month.
Eight months, right?
Okay, so 65,000 a month would, times eight, be four, 480 and, okay, 520. So instead of 800, 520, I was doing it as though they did it even during the winter, Mr. Hurstfeld.
Sorry, I thought that's what I'm...
No, that's what he said.
That's right.
What you said, that's what he said. Yeah. 520,000 gallons, but anyway, if, if 3.4 million is one-third of a day, then 520,000 is, you know, is two, an hour or two hours or something, okay? Water for the city, okay? Trying to put those in some kind of perspective, so you have an idea of what we're talking about. And so, do you, as council, would you like to take these one at a time and, and make votes on exceptions? Would you like to?
Like to do one at a time.
Okay, let's take car washes and, and go from there, okay? So this is the one that he said was 48.4 million gallons, that appears to be about five or six days of water. And it's, it's, at least something I'd like the council to consider, is, is thinking in increments instead of for ever's. And so if we, one of the things we could consider is exempting some of these things, October, November, December, January, February. We will have an update from the CRMWD, the Colorado River Municipal Water District, which is the keeper of Ivy Reservoir. We'll have an update from them in December, that they'll make available to us in January, that will more clearly determine how much water's on hand and what we will have going into the, the spring and summer. And, and that is where we're getting basically 100% of the water we use during the winter months. And so with that said, that makes it seem like to me that we, if we, any exemption we give should be for a period of time, and that we put a deadline on it, that I'm suggesting be March the first, that we would then have to talk again in late January and through February, to determine whether we continue to extend exemptions, or, or, or take them back, and, and go to a more severe position of drought control, or, and that'll give us time to see what happens with rain, gives us time to get the more data from CRMWD and so forth. But anyway, so one of the things I think we should be considering is just looking at, what do we want to do with exemptions between now and March the first, with March the first being the ending date? And then we consider again in January and February, whether we want to exempt something moving forward from there. So with those thoughts laid out, let's see what, what other people are thinking.
Do we want to come on agreement on that first, or?
If, that's up to the council.
I'm laying them out as things, I think.
You know, I was thinking through April, but I can live with March 1st, and let's get that out of the way.
See, I was further back, but I can work...
Further back, January?
Towards me, towards...
December.
December. First of the year, or, but, but I could, I could go with this on the logic of what you just described. That makes perfect sense.
If we're going to take that avenue, do we need to look at them individually then? We can just put them together if we're going to...
Well, it's up to the group again, Mr. Adams, but for now, if we can just think in increments, so we're like, let's go from now until a time on these exemptions, and that's what I'm asking you to think through. And, and then have an idea that, for instance, car washes are five or six days of a year, but in the winter time, if you're talking about, you know, October, November, December, January, February, five months, then that $48 million number is five-seventh of 48 million gallons, so we're pulling back what we're putting at risk substantially.
If you'll make that a motion, I'll say that.
Now, you're just, we're just doing car washes right now. Is there?
Well, no, I was thinking...
He'd like to see us take, he'd like to see us exempt everything that we had put before us. Mr. Adams would like to see us exempt everything that we had put before us, from now until March the first.
And I think seasonally, that makes sense. There's nothing to prevent us from jumping in between now and March 1st to shut it off. I mean...
There's only one thing, Mr. Wilde, I don't think you put on there that I think we should put on there. Did you, you didn't talk about the hand watering, because we're, we have the ability to do that.
It's coming up as, after the exceptions, after this group.
Okay, so we will get a chance to go after that. Thank you.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this, assuming that we get no rain, and I hope we do, I pray we do, March 1st, what condition will we be in? I mean, in your best estimate, you're the water expert, what, would we be okay? Would we...
At that point in time, we'll be less than a 12-month water supply.
Mr. Silva, the issue is, and he, yeah, he understands that, but Mr. Silva...
It's hard to, yeah. The primary reason is, during this time period, we're going to be relying on OHIV as our total supply. With where we're at right now, the, the usage over the last few days has dropped down the way we're just using IV totally. We've been able to shut off our local supply, so if we can maintain that from now through March, we're holding those as the reserve backup.
And I think that's a plus for us as a city, that we're going into the fall season, so that's going, that's going to help, you know? If the usage is down... But what were you going to say?
Nope, it's okay. Mr. Alexander?
I'm a little worried about a motion being put out there before I get a chance to talk about public health issues in eating areas, such as Chick-fil-A's eating area, Sonic Drive-In has eating areas, and they actually sit in their car and eat. And what, what happens is, if you don't, if we don't allow an exemption for them to go out and clean their eating areas, there's ketchup, and it smells bad, and bees love it, and there's people allergic to bees. It becomes a health hazard to not allow them to clean up those areas. They can do, they can clean up their area. Sonic Drive-In can do it with 1,000 gallons a month, and they can tell you how, they'll tell you how in a minute. I want them included in exemption. Eating areas, we should be able to clean those. It's a, it's a health, it's a health issue.
All right, just a moment. Is there, Mr. Wilde and others, is there, in your mind, is there restriction on cleaning the outdoor eating areas at restaurants and food service establishments under the drought stage level three?
It specifically says, if you get a water hose and start cleaning off a sidewalk, that is waste. It says that, and so that's what it says. And it, it says, as far as health issues, we're talking about ambulances, being able to clean the ambulances and fire trucks, because they're public safety issues, but we never say eating.
But I think it doesn't it...
With a bucket of water and hand cleaning, you don't have to clean it with a water hose.
When the ketchup hits the ground, wait till Rick Johnson gets up here with his device. He'll show you, he's got a device that uses 100 gallons an hour, they clean their entire facility in 45 minutes. They do it three times a week. It's under 1,000 gallons a month.
Well, what a better question would be, where...
You've got to get debris out of there.
Are you through, Mr. Alexander, I mean, I mean, Mr. Silva?
And I guess to tag on to that, to piggyback on that, where, you know, where do restaurants fall in? I mean...
Well, there are restrictions about water in restaurants, clearly in the ordinance. I mean, it says, I remember that, but I didn't remember this outdoor cleaning.
As far as under the Water Conservation Ordinance, that is not addressed. That is not a prohibited use in drought level three. It would fall under the waste of water. If they're washing these areas down, and it's discharging into the street beyond of 150 feet, then it would come under those restrictions, but it's not a prohibited use under the, under the conservation ordinance.
I suggest that we deal with it if it's an issue, and see, you understand, you know, Paul, I had a lot of, a lot of parking lots in, in, in different communities, I was required to sweep and pick up instead of, you know, but we preferred to power wash sidewalks and power wash the parking spaces next to the sidewalk, because that's where people empty their car onto your parking lot. And you, you have to sweep up behind them, and we wanted to clean that up because of ketchup and other kinds of things. And so, but if we, I think we need to see what our enforcement's going to be, and then we could deal with that. Again, remember, under the resolution, you have permission to deal with things on a one, one-shot basis. You're not having, it's not, it doesn't have to be dragged out. So I don't know if maybe that's something we deal with as we understand it a little better, because I think it's legitimate. I mean, there's got to be a way to, to keep bees and, and other pests from becoming a problem at a business.
So am I understanding it right, that if we go into the, you know, March, so it'd be a six-month reprieve from all these exemptions, or five months?
During the winter, when there's no evapor, not as much evaporation and all that, for these specific things.
Right.
Only these specific things. If you take them all at once, as Mr. Adams said, okay? If Mr. Alexander, you know, wanted to include that, that issue, he'd have to amend the motion to include more than was presented. And I'm requesting maybe that we do that at another time, and just do, deal with it, knowing we could in one, one meeting, okay?
And I guess what's leading up to my statement is, I can understand some of these folks, you know, I, I see it, but when I hear what I mentioned earlier on the water transport services out there, we're, I don't want them included in the exceptions, but I'm, I just want to throw that out there as to where, what we do with those folks, you know? If, if they're using 200, 300,000 gallons a month, that's, that's alarming to me, you know?
Is it for transportation, or is it?
It's a transport service, and I think...
Here's what I would ask you to do, again, this is the same as Mr. Alexander. These issues that are in front of us, we've seen multiple times, so I feel like we're educated, and we really have some idea of what, how to vote. What I would like to see you do, same with Mr. Alexander, is not have this be something we make a decision on today, when it's been brought up today, but that we now say, okay, let's learn enough about these two issues. And, Mr. Silva, so we would then vote to restrict, or...
That's fair enough, yeah.
After we know a little, you know?
If I may, though it does not say restaurants specifically, Mr. Alexander, I'm, I'm reading the ordinance here, and it says, the city shall, the city may grant a variance from the requirements of this article after determining that because of a special circumstance, which I think is what that would be, the, the applicable, the applicant can come before council and ask for said variance. So I think that that would probably cover that, because it says right here, special circumstances, and I would assume that to be one of them.
Well, and again, what I'm after is what Mr. Silva wants to do to restrict something, and what Mr. Alexander wants to do. I, I want to flesh those out and get them done. We can listen, learn, and then make a decision. I'm wanting us today to deal with the ones that we've seen two or three meetings' worth of information on, and, and get them taken care of.
And they can bring this information...
And bring this information, learn about it.
Just like they did this one, so that's fine.
Right, learn about it, and then make a decision.
Could, do we define a pool? That's another question I have. Do we define a pool as permanently installed and has a circulation system on it, permanent circulation system, or can somebody set up a pool in their backyard?
I don't know the answer to that.
And, and the reason, I'd say if we change the wording to a permanently installed pool with a permanent, uh, circulation system on it, that might fortify what we mean by that. But I'm also, I've had a constituent call me and say, okay, wait a minute, I have a koi pond, that, you know, you've seen those koi ponds? It's permanently installed, it has a circulation system, and it can't, it can't run dry either. So...
Okay.
They're, they're wanting that, and so if we define it a certain way, it, it kind of works a little differently.
Well, remember what Mr. Wilde said while ago? Well, remember what Mr. Willey said while ago, he said ornamental fountains, those kinds of things would be included, okay?
Included in the exemption?
Yes, sir.
Oh, heck.
That's what he just said, okay? Okay, the only thing I'm not so clear on is the little kiddie pool, or the, you know, the one that you fill up in your backyard and then empty, or those kinds of things, okay? So, okay, now, would you like me to go?
What did you just say? I mean, that, on the, I'm not sure, quite sure I got that, on the fountains?
He talked, when he gave his presentation just now.
Right.
He said something about an ornamental fountain would be allowed to be used in, in, under this exemption, okay? Would you like to see that handled as a separate item?
Do you have a concern about a fountain maybe being 30 feet tall? It's a big fountain, so. Mike, tell me what you want.
I, I, I see a fountain as ornamental, and I, and if it's got the same issues and same problems, and maybe it does with, with it running dry, then I'd just like to kind of hear that from those that.
Let's, let's, let's confine what we're saying then to the things, I mean, it's a great point, Mr. Hirschfeld, but it's the same thing I'm trying to say now, let's, let's not.
We haven't really gone into it.
Let's don't do things that we haven't learned anything about, let's do things that we have learned something about. So, what you're saying is, look, let's just talk about pools right now, and then we would look at ornamental fountains and things like that, as, as we would also look at the transportation water that we're selling, as we would also look at the outdoor facilities and take those up and then get educated and make a vote, isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what we would be talking about if we want to do this is car washes, pools, not fountains or ornamental fountains, golf courses, greens on golf courses, nurseries, and Goodfellow Air Force Base's K-9 area, okay? Under their request, that's what's being put off, okay?
And, and I guess back on the car washes.
That's what we're exempting, is what he's saying.
We're just, I mean, we're not taking into account any particular time of day, and I don't know that that really makes a difference. Again, all, what I've tried to learn from this is I've gone back and looked at other cities, and if I recall, from what I read about San Antonio's, is they limit the hours that you can run a car wash. I mean, that, that's, that's what I had read, and so, um, that's what I, does that have an impact or not? And I, would it, how it, I, I don't know. And then also, the, never really got a clear answer when we had asked the question about, what about those that, how many of them in town really do reuse? You know, the, the reclaim of the water? And, you know, what's their, I mean, are they, I've heard anywhere between, what, 30 and 80% of water savings that they can have? And, you know, and that's, was one of the guys that said that, so.
My perspective on it is a little more basic than that, but it's the idea that if we exempt them in their existing state from now until the 1st of March, we're talking about two days' worth of water in the grand scheme. And what I would say to you is, I agree that, I mean, in fact, I, I find myself sitting here thinking, listen, if things don't change substantially between now and March 1st, that's when I would make my vote to say, we're just not going to allow car washes to operate. And, and that's where they would have to really be able to say, look, I'm using 80% of my water twice, um, those kinds of things. So that's my perspective, is that we're talking about two days' worth of water for the city to let them stay in operation until March the 1st, so I'm okay with that. And then I would, in the, because when we're going to have real problems is when we have evaporation. And we're going to start having evaporation in April, May, June, July, and so I would, myself, like to say, look, they, they need to keep, they should be allowed to keep operation, they should be allowed to keep all their employees on and go ahead and, and be in business until March 1st. At that point, that's where my switch flips toward what Craig Myers said earlier about public good versus individual needs. And for me personally, that's it, I've, my, my switch flips March the 1st, because then I'm seeing, okay, evaporation is coming, it's going to be, we really are, we really got to make all the hardest decisions. And, and I, that's when I would say, okay, I'm not going to let car washes operate unless the water system, you know, is, is more, more secure.
I agree with that completely, and I, I just want us to realize that car wash operations close on bad weather days, whether it's too cold, temperature-wise, I mean, they're closed. They don't have a profit and income on those days, and of course, they're closed on rainy days. So, those are days that they are out of operation, and, and we do need to consider that. So I agree 100% with what you said, we can do what we can do until March 1st, and then due to the weather, evaporation, it's going to have to be looked at again.
Okay, is there a motion to consider all of these at once, or do we need to make a mo, someone, I'd appreciate a motion for all of these at once, or a motion on just car washes?
I'll make the motion to consider all of them at once.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
And with the motion being that this would go from now until March the 1st?
To March the 1st.
I've got a problem with that. I've got a problem with March 1.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll ask for comments after I accept the motion, okay? So I have a motion that we accept all of these exemptions from now until March the 1st, right?
Yes.
Okay, for re-review in late January and February and all that.
Or necessary review before that time.
Correct, very well said. Mr. Adams, is that your second?
Second.
Mr. Morrison, let me recognize you so you can talk about this.
I've got a problem with that March 1. We are, we are running out of water, we have less than a year's worth of water right now. And that's a fact, and it's something that we need to realize, and it's something we need to work on. I don't have a problem with going to December 1, maybe even January 1, with a hard, fast cutoff at that time. That way, that gives these people a little opportunity, it gives them a chance to maybe look at something else. But the fact of the matter is, if it does not rain, we will be out of drinking water in October. And as far as my area, it would be better to go to March 1, because when we cut everybody off, they're going to be out in the north end of town pulling out of that reservoir, which, which is the only water supply for the entire northern part of Tom Green County. And that reservoir is dropping like a rock. And so when people go to the north end and begin to pump out of that reservoir, it's taking water that, from people that have no other choice, they, they can't tie on to the city because they live in the county. So, from that perspective, it would be better to go to March 1, but for the perspective of the citizens, I think the 1st of the year, I think the 1st of the year would be a good, fast, hard cutoff date. I want support March 1.
Very good. Other consideration for this?
I, I just want to say that I, I tried a long time ago, earlier this year, to get us to move that South Pole water earlier. And my newer figures are showing that we could have saved 3,300 acre feet doing it. And when we can save that kind of water by moving our water around, we don't have any business cutting off these, these people for using a fraction of that water. We have got to get good with our water this coming year, because I, I, I mean, I, I just cannot allow the system to stay like it is and then shut people down like car washes. We have to be better with our water, and it's, we're the bigger violators, we're the ones that need to point the finger at ourselves. We need to understand our water situation and, and execute better this next year so that we don't lose that kind of water.
Okay.
That, that's my feeling, so I, I would never put somebody out of work over these little amounts of water when they're losing as much as we are.
I don't, okay.
And those are all, those are all not proven numbers, but they are becoming more and most, more solid every day. I mean, I'm getting, I have information to back them up, et cetera, and so that's why I put those numbers out there. We, we can do it, we can move the water, and, and I think we should, earlier this year, rather than shut these people down.
Okay, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Silves?
You know, I was just going to say that I can, on one hand, I can see maybe March 1, but on the other, is, you know, do we, do we deplete our water supply even more by extending it to the, the five months? But I'd like to hear maybe from the car wash folks, what it would do, for example, if we went to a January 1, you know, just to.
Okay, well, I'm glad, I am going to ask, I am going to ask for public input. But one of the things that, remember, one of the key reasons why I'm saying you ought to wait until sometime after the 1st of the year, you're going to get a key data point right after the 1st of the year. Because that's when the CRMWD is supposed to let you know what IV looks like and what they're going to do. So, I'm, I'm personally thinking we need that data to make our next decision. So it doesn't make sense to me to shut these guys down on January 1st and then be told on January 10th or 15th what the position is at IV. So I'm, that's the reason I'm trying to push the, the date back so that we get that data point and take that into consideration when we make our decisions, okay? So again, that's part of why I think it's March 1st, okay?
I looked at this from, I'm glad you said what you did, man, I looked at this from several different perspectives, and like Mr. Morrison, it was keeping me awake at night. I was trying to figure out what would be best for the citizens, what would be best for our business owners. Originally, I was reading the, the ordinance, and I'm thinking, okay, it says the city of San Antonio shall manage, and now it seems like we're trying to negotiate, but we don't want to put anyone out of work. And then I thought about what you had said, except instead of hourly, I was thinking car washes could be open on certain days. But it really just seems like what, what you said makes the most sense, and it gives them an opportunity to keep their businesses open, and, and us an opportunity as a city to keep, help someone keep, keep their jobs. So that's why I support what you say. And I, I also realize that those are the cooler times during the year, so shouldn't use just a lot of water due to evaporation.
Okay, public input on the item, please. Okay, call for the vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
One, two, sorry, Mr. Silves?
I, I'm on the fence.
Well, you got to take a vote.
But you're right, but you're right, if data will be, we will receive the data when?
After. January.
After we've received the data, can't we visit this again?
Her motion allowed that. She said unless something comes up that allows you to bring it forward. That's all right, your vote's taken, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with March 1.
Okay, so you're an aye. Mr. Alexander, I heard you as an aye.
I am an aye.
Uh, Mr. Silves, I heard you as an aye. Ms. Farmer, I heard you as an aye. Mr. Adams, I heard you as an aye. An aye, I'm an aye, so I have two in opposition, it's Mr. Hirschfeld and Mr. Morrison, okay? Item number 18, this is consideration of matters related to, to the filling and operation of city fountains, water lily basins, and Love Municipal Pool during drought stage three. Presentation by Parks and Recreation Director Carl White.
Mayor, before we get off of the previous item, there were two other, other issues we wanted to address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That you may want to look at real quick is, first of all, the tree and foundation watering issue.
I didn't realize they were under 17, sorry about that.
As the ordinance allows the council to permit watering of trees and, and foundation watering, which does include soaker hoses are included as an allowable type of a device for, for the drip irrigation part. And the council, the, the, the ordinance allows the council this, this exception under the ordinance, so it would be up your, for you to establish any times that that would be permitted.
Okay, is there someone that's wanting to grab hold of this, or, you know, again, my, my perspective's going to be very much the same, that allowing people hand watering or drip irrigation, and Ms. Farmer, you know, we can see what the ordinance says as it relates to soaker hoses, but anyway, would, would be allowed, it's just there's no longer the irrigate, you know, there's no longer the use of sprinklers and watering grass and those kinds of things, that we would restrict it to trees and foundations. And I, I definitely would like to see us do that, but what are others' thoughts?
I, I want to just throw this out. It doesn't matter what we do, are we still going to get those folks out there, and, and I'm always hitting on this, on those, the residential users? We still going to get those big users out there? The 50, 80, 100,000 dollar, 100 gallon a month users, you think?
I don't see how, let's see what Mr. Willey thinks.
As far as that, a lot of that usage would have been for watering lawn areas, which now is prohibited, other than if, if you allow an exception now for watering of trees or foundations.
When this is hand watering or drip irrigation only?
Yes, they can't use their sprinkler system anymore.
See what I'm saying, Mr. Silves? I really think you're, you're affecting that.
Okay.
Completely.
Mr. Willey did point out to me that soaker hoses was covered under definitions in the drip irrigation.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm in favor of this, and, and the only reason that I was not in favor of the previous one was the timeframe. I would have preferred a February 1, but it is what it is inside.
Well, and again, she, her motion does allow it, I mean, if you hear something between now and then, or you see data points, her motion did allow you to go ahead and bring it back up.
Okay.
Okay?
So do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, we would need a motion and, and some clarity, see how he's saying? Council establishes conditions, days, times, frequency, amount, so, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't that be?
And one, one thing we may want to do in this is we are working on with John Bigno right now to come up with some recommendations on the frequency, the application methods and those things. We anticipate to have that ready by the next meeting in October, so you may want to delay final action on this until that particular meeting to establish those, those conditions.
Well, the, in visiting with Mr. Bigno, you know, the trees in, between now and October, you know, possibly needing, you know, one more watering, a hand watering deal. But the foundations, and I felt like that we had covered this, that they're already covered in the ordinance, but you're asking for clarification, days, times, and frequency in these items, is that correct?
Were it me, I mean, folks, if it's me, under what we just did and under the fact that I, I would rather, I would like to see us make sure people understand, you can water your trees now. So I wouldn't want there to be any misconception that you're going, you're going to allow a car wash to stay open, but you're telling me I can't water my tree. So my perspective on it is, we need to go ahead and put something in place that makes it clear to people, on October the 1st, when this goes into effect, it does not keep you from watering your tree. It does shut down your sprinkler system.
Right.
Okay.
Not off the, off the top of my head, I don't know what the days for watering in, in drought level two are, or even in, even in drought level one.
It's once a week?
Once a week, okay, so can we just, can, can we make the motion to approve the hand watering or drip irrigation of trees and foundations and just say?
Once a week?
Yeah, I'm thinking once, once a week, in specified day, and just make it the time that.
Per tree, per residence? Frequency and timing is per drought level two. That's easiest, right? That would work.
Yeah. So, my motion would be to, 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 to accept the, to, to approve this, to accept it, hand watering or drip irrigation of trees and foundations, and with reference to the frequency, the times that are set forth in drought level two.
Okay, I'm just going to tell you that drought level two allows for hand watering any day, and so I can water my tree any day, which.
Any day.
Any day, because hand watering is any day. And I don't see a problem with any day, because we have these surcharges that kick in, and it gets expensive to water. I mean, really, John Bigno says every three weeks is what a tree needs. Now, if it's a young tree, it needs four gallons a day, so.
But it's hand watering, it's hand watering or drip irrigation, I mean, those are the key, key things versus people running sprinkler systems or water sprinklers.
So, for me personally, through March 1st, you can water your tree, that simple, done, that's, that's good for me. Because we can see what happens with water usage, and we can come back in Jan, or January, February, and talk about, okay, this is not working, they're using too much water, and we can start putting more restrictions on how you do that.
Mr. Adams, was that a motion that you made?
Yes, it was.
Did you ever get a second?
No.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Adams made a motion that we do hand watering or drip irrigation of trees and foundations effective with the October 1st implement, implementation of level three.
Through the same timeframe.
Okay, okay. With, with the restrictions provided under drought level two.
Correct.
In the ordinance until March the 1st.
Correct.
Will refresh my memory, what is this going to do for some person out there that has hanging plants or potted plants or bushes? Is, are those out? Or can I hang, get my hanging plant and hang it on my tree, and when I'm watering my tree, I water my hanging plant? Or what does that do? What? Is that, that's, because either we stop it at hand watering, or, are you talking about or drip irrigation of trees? Hand watering could be me watering my hanging plant.
All right, I don't think there is a provision against watering potted plants that you may have in your house or on your porch in that manner, it, it addressed the shrubs, the, the grass areas in that respect.
Okay, I just want clarification on that.
Mr. Dane, do you have extra input? Mr. Dane, do you have extra input?
No, but it appears to me that the bullet point, the first bullet point is hand watering or drip irrigation of trees. So it, it appears that we would interpret this as hand watering of trees or drip irrigation of trees and then hanging plants.
Are not included.
Not included.
Yeah, we may need, okay.
I can throw my dishwater out there on my bushes or my plants.
Any day you want.
Any day I want.
And I think we ought to encourage the use of gray water and shower water to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there other input?
I just, I'm also wondering about the definition of a tree. I have this Yopon Holly that is so big, it is a tree. I mean, it is 30 feet tall.
What is it Mr. Morrison brought in here?
That's a tree. But a Yopon, I have this, I, the Yopon Holly can be considered a bush or a tree. It's kind of a cross, but it, mine's as tall as a tree. It's cut like a tree. So.
Okay.
Just saying, it, it's going to be confusing. And, and it sounds like what we can do is we can hand water daily, but we just can't do it from noon until 6:00.
Once a week?
Well, hand watering is every day on a drought level two.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
So that's, that's the noon to 6:00 restriction is what we've just done. Uh, trees only.
That's my motion.
Foundations.
I'm seeing a.
One last question.
Foundations, right?
For Ms. Farmer. Sounds like you use it, but dishwater or water from a shower, how does it affect my plant? Does it?
Doesn't hurt them.
Doesn't hurt them with soap or shampooing?
Doesn't hurt them.
Cleans them.
Does it?
Yeah, they like it.
Now Coca-Cola would hurt them. Coke will hurt them.
Call Mr. Bigno.
If chemicals from your swimming pool that I use to backwash on my lawn, it's not, it doesn't hurt them. It's gray water. It's usable.
Okay, public input on this item.
Is clarification that foundations are included? Yes?
Right there. Trees and foundations.
Just a question to your, to the mic. Bob Bankster, Rowan, I could water my trees if this passed.
Hand water?
I can hand water my trees, I can hand water the foundations.
Correct.
But the 75 bushes I got have to die.
Could happen.
It's already started.
Okay, could happen. And you just have to draw a line somewhere. So is it your yard? Is it?
I mean, the grass is dying, my bushes are dying. I can keep my tree alive, not have any grass around it, kill, kill the bushes.
Are your bushes against the building?
Some are.
Those are the ones you can water because that's your foundation too. I mean, you can't not water your bushes and get the foundation only.
You guys wash linens every day. Capture that water.
See, the problem is if you, you know, again, it's like Paul said, you, the definition of a tree. And see, now you start getting into a definition of a bush and you could have a little bush this big that, you know, it could get way out of hand.
I understand, but I, I have bushes that are well-established, 30-year-old bushes. And I've lost about 12 bushes already with the watering restriction. I have about another seven that are getting ready to fizzle out. And, you know, I got a ton of bushes. And it encompasses the front, the front of the property along the, along the foundation. And then we have, you know, some bushes that, like around the pool area, there's some bushes and, and things of that nature, so, you know.
My take, and I think we're sympathetic with not just you, but everybody out there that has.
Oh, it's everybody, absolutely.
It's everybody in the city. But let's get realistic on the thing, is that we're trying to conserve water and we're trying to, you know, with the pools, with the watering of foundations and stuff, we're trying to ensure there is no structural damage with any of the, any of the permanent fixtures in place.
Understood.
I mean, that's, that is the first and foremost key because that's a huge financial impact. And, you know, and then the other aspect with the car washes and such, I mean, that's, we're trying to address the fact of, uh, you know, not putting people out of business.
Understood.
So, you know, I think there's a line we have to draw and that's where bushes I see are unfortunately.
With a little extra work and a little extra time, we've got a Carolina jasmine bush in the yard and the dishwater that I'm doing in the big bowl that I throw out on that bush daily, it is thriving, but I'm not watering from outside or using the sprinkler system or the hosed water. It's from a bowl out of my.
Right, we, we do use some gray water, um, from linen that we soak, uh, that are stained. We, we do use that water.
You have a terrific opportunity for rainwater capture and things of that nature. You have a big property.
Yes, and the problem is where you put it. Um, but, you know, as Johnny said, you know, the washing machines, I, I thought about that. How do we, how can we use that water to water? It becomes a liability issue because we would have to run a, a three-foot PVC pipe from the drains and the machines out to, to the courtyard area where the, where the grass is and the bushes are on the far front of the property and it becomes a liability issue. So we wouldn't, you know.
And hey, if you, you know, if you're going to hand water your foundation and the bushes happen to get in the way, hey, that's, that's a plus for you.
Yeah, but I mean, also I don't want, I don't want people to think that we're trying to take advantage of anything either, so, you know, I would try to do things that's righteous for, that everybody has to do, so.
Thank you. Hi.
How are you all today?
Good, thank you.
My name's Jerry Barnard. I have a, I have two meters, a house meter and an irrigation meter. And with this going to effect, I can't use my irrigation meter. Are you still going to charge me the, I think $27 a month for it?
Okay.
I mean, by statute, you're telling me if you guys bought 10 police cars and Ford called you and said, hey, we're selling you all these, uh, police cars, but you can't use them for a year.
I understand. Your question's not unreasonable. Let me see if I can get an answer for you.
Okay.
Okay, let's see what we got.
That, that is the next item you'll have for consideration.
Okay, we're about to have that item up for consideration, sir.
Hello, I'm Rick Johnson. I'm with the Sonic Drive-Ins and I just wanted to get a clarification because it seemed like we were quickly moving past item number 17 and, uh, just want to say I appreciate all you guys' leadership and got some tough decisions in front of you today, but what, what was the ruling on, can we clean our outdoor dining areas? Or are we exempt or not exempt? I just don't want to be a criminal four days from now for cleaning those areas.
The interpretation was that, the interpretation, as we understood it, was that you can clean your outdoor facility. But for instance, if you start watering, wa, power washing, the, the drive next to the order machine and it goes out into the street, you're going to be in violation.
Okay.
So the issue would be that you're able to clean tables and chairs and the things that are in your little courtyard area, um, and you're able to clean under where people do orders, um, but if it's seen as wasting water, so water's running off, that's where you're going to end up in trouble. Okay? So.
Like.
Go ahead.
How do we clean where, like you said, you know, it, our parking lot is a trash can. People unload their cars there and throw food out and it stains the ground and we get all kinds of pests and, and it's a health, it's a health issue if we don't clean that up. Uh, you know, we have a, a pretty unique tool that uses very little water, uh, but, uh.
I mean, so the answer though, again, is sweeping as much as possible and then using water as necessary to clean residue.
Okay.
You know, clean, but, but if it's seen.
As little as possible.
But if it's seen.
Right, and.
You know, but then if it's seen running down the road, that's where someone would come in and go, look, that doesn't look as little as possible. That looks like abuse.
Right.
Okay?
Well, it, it's going to run a little bit. I mean, we're, we're using, uh, I have a tool, I can show you what we use and it uses very little water, but I mean, it runs off a little bit and to clean the.
So, but I mean, the position.
To clean the residue out of the parking lot.
I know. But so the position might be, sir, that you're not doing it all at once now. I mean, maybe you're doing half of one side and then another day, half of one side.
Sure.
Uh, some, you know, some things to make sure that you're not pouring water out in the street and you're not wasting water.
Okay.
But you're, you know, as I understood what you're doing, you're restricting the amount of water the best that you can. You're taking care of a public health concern.
Right.
And so we're trying to be as lenient about it as possible, but if a code enforcement officer or one of your customers complain, if, you know, complains about you.
Sure.
You know, here I can't do this, I can't do that, and here he's pouring water down the street.
Right, that's why I just wanted to get a clarification.
The review, the review of that would be to go see, is there a public problem, public health issue at hand and is he being abusive of the water?
Right.
So I think what we're, I mean, what we're trying to do is say, you know, go ahead and clean. Now then, if you come up, I know you don't want to be a criminal and you don't want to do the wrong thing. If you come up with a problem, then, then the resolution that we passed today gave us the opportunity for you to come right back.
Right.
And say, look, you know, I'm, I'm just cleaning and we would then be able to battle through whether we need to do something more.
Right.
But right now, we think we have you taken care of under the fact that you're allowed to clean up, uh, but under public health concern and you're allowed to take care of your property as long as it's not wasting water, putting it down the street.
So how would we communicate that with code enforcement who's telling us today?
Bring it back.
You mean all of them right back there?
That we're not going to be able to use water outside.
They're sitting right there.
Yeah, seriously.
They're all right behind you.
Not joking.
They're all sitting right there.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
And speaking of that, James, I commend you. I think that was a good idea to bring the guys in for that.
Other public input? Other public input on this item? Folks, if you'd like to, to speak, please go ahead and come up to the front so that we have this moving forward as well as possible.
Uh, I would like to bring up that.
Go ahead, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Jerry Warnell, Chicken Farm Art Center.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to bring up, as you, uh, brought up and as Mr. Morrison brought up, rainwater catchment and the use of gray water is something that I think the city ought to, uh, examine closely and incentivize a lot of the people. It would solve most of the water problems, uh, as far as watering bushes and trees. We've, uh, established a pretty good water catchment system at the chicken farm and so far it's been, we're pretty much totally reliant on it.
Thank you very much for your input. Other public input? Okay, I have a motion, um, a motion and a second, or a motion to be considered that I need to call for the vote on, and it is to, uh, allow hand watering and drip irrigation of trees to be defined by what level two, drought stage level two says about those items until March the 1st. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I have a, just.
Same reason, the date.
Just, just Mr. Morrison, uh, voting nay. Mr. Willey?
The final item is the consideration on the landscape, the sprinkler meters. Uh, we have received requests from individuals, uh, some of those around the lake who utilize raw water also would come to this category to discontinue that service, uh, particularly since we're in drought stage level three now, which prohibits the use of, of watering of grass. Uh, if the service is continued, there is a monthly, monthly base fee that would continue to be assessed. Uh, if a person wants to discontinue that service, they can. There's no cost for doing that, but when they come back and to reactivate service, ordinance currently requires a $20 reactivation fee. So, uh, the request is, is do we continue with as the ordinance has stipulator, does the council want to direct us to, to look at something different there?
Do you pull the meter?
We don't pull the meter, we just discontinue it in the billing system.
Um, do you, what's required to reactivate?
Uh, as far as that, we would just have to obtain the meter reading and then just reestablish, uh, the account for billing purposes.
Okay.
So there's a $20 fee to reactivate?
To reactivate, yes.
And they're asking us whether we can do away with that or not, or?
If there, uh, and the request we've received from individuals.
Basically, it's the gentleman.
Can that be waived since?
The gentleman that was up here a while ago and he's saying, you know, I'm not going to be able to use my land meter, my landscape meter now, are you going to charge me for it? What Mr. Willey's saying is, yes, we are unless you call and discontinue service. Then the, then the question, the gentleman calls, would come back and say, okay, I'm going to discontinue service because I can't use it anyway. And then it rains and, and the lakes are full and the gentleman wants to come back and reactivate and start using his landscape meter again. And Mr. Willey's saying, do you want to charge him to reactivate? Okay? Or do you want to exempt him from that reactivation fee? Mr. Morrison?
I would like to see an exemption on the activation. It's not his fault that we're cutting him off.
That's exactly.
So I would like to.
So you're making a motion?
I would make the motion to, to discontinue service, but to take away the $20 activation fee.
Reactivation.
Reactivation.
Mr. Silves, you're seconding Mr. Morrison's motion. Is there a further question on this, this, this item or further, further comments?
Will, but there's no, there's no charge now to discontinue, right?
No charge to disconnect, just when they would reactivate, there would be that $20 fee.
What is involved in the reactivation?
Uh, to physically obtain a meter reading and then to, just the administrative work to reopen the account.
So is labor involved?
There is. I was hoping it was the automated meter.
Yeah, me too.
Some of those may be in the automated meter reading system, so we could get those electronically.
Someone's got to go on in the system and change stuff, even if it's a, and send the signal.
Versus though sending a vehicle and a person, that's what I was hoping.
It's less labor, but it's still labor.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion and a second to, uh, to exempt the $20 activation fee to reestablish service for folks that decide to discontinue, uh, service on these landscape meters based on the fact that they're no longer allowed to use them. Okay? Further question or comment from council?
Mayor? Will, do you need a specified time period for this waiver of this fee or are we completely removing the fee?
I think we would tie it with the drought level three.[1531.21] I think we would tie it with the drought level three.
Okay. I think that needs to be clarified.
Mr. Morrison, is it okay that your motion read that it's tied to drought level three?
I'll amend that to correlate with drought three.
Drought stage three, okay. Mr. Silvas? Okay. Is there public input before I call for this vote? Okay, call for the vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Alexander, did I hear you, sir?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Mr. Adams?
He was
Okay. Which way did you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I needed. Okay, we have a four to three vote, okay? You have Mr. Adams, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Silvas, and Mr. Alexander in the aye, and you have Ms. Farmer, Mr. Hirschfeld, and myself in the nay. Okay? Let's move on to, I don't know, Mr. Willie, I'm okay to go to 18? Right, we're through? Thanks so much, I appreciate you. Item number 18, I'm sorry, Mr. Adams. Item number 18, consideration of matters related to the filling and operation of city fountains, water lily basins, and love municipal pool during drought stage three. Mr. Carl White, the Director of Parks and Recreation, presenting.
Hi, sir. If I understand the past few votes, pools have been exempted and the watering of trees have been exempted.
That's correct.
I would assume that it also includes the city's pool and the city's trees.
Hand watering and drip system watering.
Right, drip water, yes. Hand watering, drip irrigation on trees, okay? And what was your other question?
About the filling of the pool.
Yeah, it's a maintenance issue. What we've decided and learned is that we're going to have so much damage to plaster and linings and different things, and we're talking, and that goes until March 1st.
Correct.
But basically, to save two days' worth of water, we're creating a lot of financial hardship, and we're causing job loss. And so, for those reasons, we're saying, look, let's watch this until March 1st and then make some
Okay, so I won't cover those in my presentation.
Okay.
So, I would like to cover the water features. As you know, the drought level three ordinance states the use of treated or raw city water to fill, refill, or maintain the level of any fountain or swimming pool is prohibited. In terms of the watering of parks, we are already complying with restrictions of drought level three. We have cut off the irrigation systems for the parks. We have been drip watering some of the trees along the river, and will continue to do that up until March 1st or earlier. But including the parks, we have some water features, and we'd like to talk to you about how we intend to address those. Because under the drought restrictions, we can't fill or operate those water features. That includes the tiered plaza fountains, the U.C.R.A. educational ponds, the visitor center water feature, the river fountains that are being included along the banks of the river as part of the river improvement project, and the international water lily collection. Here's a picture of the, I think I skipped one. No. Here's a picture of the tiered plaza fountains. They're connected to the city water. We see no issue in turning those off and draining those basins and keeping them empty. The U.C.R.A. educational ponds, they're supposed to be primarily filled with stormwater runoff water that gets filtered and pumped into the ponds. The secondary water source comes from the river, so that is city raw water, so those would need to be cut off. We see no issue in emptying these pools and keeping them empty. The visitor center water features?
With that, I mean, you're saying it came from, typically comes from stormwater?
It's a primary source.
A little vortex?
Correct. But if there's no stormwater runoff, it comes out of the
Right, but if there is, they could fill it back up if, with the stormwater that came
That's correct.
Okay, alright.
Next is the, are the water features at the visitor center? Those are connected to city water, so our recommendation would be to turn those off. We have received a letter from Mr. Tom Early and Mr. Phil Neighbors, and I'll read that here in a minute. They are requesting exemption for that water feature to stay operational. Again, the fountains along the river is part of the new river project, pump water out of the river, which is city raw water. We have some obligations under the contract to allow the contractor to test those in terms of completing those as part of the project, but otherwise, we see no need to operate those once they're finished.
They pump water out of the river?
Correct.
And the water goes up into the fall and goes back into the river? So, our losses are mostly evaporated.
Negligible. But under the wording of the ordinance, we aren't allowed to operate those.
We are allowed to.
We aren't.
We're not allowed to.
Correct.
Are not.
I'm going to argue for those things because they don't take a lot of water. Go ahead.
And I would like to mention that the project now is going to go into August, so in terms of we operating those water features, we're not going to be doing that until later on down the road. So, they won't be operational now until March.
Till March?
He's saying that the other things that we voted on, I believe Mr. White's saying that based on the other things that we voted on, they won't be in place anyway.
Right.
During that timeframe.
That's correct.
He's, I think what he just said is they're not likely to be online until next August.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, one other thing I would like to talk about, and I'll come back to the visitor center water feature, is the international water lily collection. It does get water from city supply, a city tap. We can follow the restrictions in drought level three. Our proposal is to pump water out of the city well that we possess into a tank and bring it over to the collection and keep it filled that way. That's our proposal.
Mr. Morrison?
Where is the city well?
Yes, sir, it's in the north side. It's
No.
Next to the Bligh Arena.
When we destroy that aquifer, we are destroying hundreds of families in northern Tom Green County that have no choice, and just to keep, no, that's not acceptable.
There's a, there's maybe a better answer than, okay. Keep going.
So, I mean, we could either cut it off, we could fill it with well water that we, the city owns, we could find somebody who can donate water for this, to keep this filled, or we could keep it connected to the city system.
Correct.
I would suggest keep it connected to the city system wherever one else is.
There you go. Okay.
I believe that's it.
I thought I saw one more, sir.
Well, that's the pool and the riverside trees.
Okay, so those two have been covered for now, haven't they?
Right.
Could you read those letters, please?
Okay, can you go, can you go back to the, do you mind going back to the
Your summary. Visitor Center?
Yeah, the letter you were going to read and all that.
Received this letter from Mr. Tom Early and Phil Neighbors. Just a picture. It states, it's short, "We respectfully submit for your consideration keeping the water feature at the San Angelo Visitor Center in operation. The visitor center now averages 1,000 visitors per month, most of which come from out of town. In addition, prospective business representatives often come to the chamber offices at this same site. Numerous meetings are held daily at the various meeting rooms. Since the water is recirculated, the only loss is through evaporation, and it doesn't require much water to keep it running. As you know, this facility is really the gateway to our community, and it makes sense to make a good impression. Thanks for your consideration."
Okay. Again
Does this use city water?
Yes.
City water?
Yes.
Can you go back to the summary? From, from One of the early pages?
Yeah, thank you, sir. From the river or from a tap?
Tap.
Okay, so he said, under your, under the water features, he said the tiered plaza fountains could be shut down with no damage or issue. The U.C.R.A. educational ponds could be shut down and would refill with stormwater when available. Then we just heard the letter concerning the visitor's center, and it is recirculating water from a city tap. And then the river fountains aren't really coming online until next August, so that's a decision, I think, for another day. The international water lily collection, we heard Mr. Morrison's concerned that if we send a city truck over and use a well on the north side, that, you know, we're both investing in labor and taking water from neighbors. And then the municipal pool and the downtown riverside trees were covered earlier. So, how would somebody like to tackle this? Do you want to do the visitor center separately? Do you want to do the tiered plaza, U.C.R.A., visitor center, international water lily pond collection? It seems like we probably need to do them individually, the way the data was presented, don't you think?
I'm prepared to make a motion to take staff's recommendation on what they see as no issues of shutting down the tiered plaza. And
Excuse me, mayor.
I do believe that, yes, we're
Oh, thanks. Well, I thought, it says Consideration? I always mishandle that word. So, because it says consideration of matters related, so, you know, I always act like that's an action item, okay? As opposed to discussion
We got a problem here, then.
Yeah, when it says discussion, I get it, that it's discussion, but anyway, you're saying it's not an action item.
I'm not interpreting it
That's alright. All you have to do is tell me. You're just telling me, I don't care. I'm just telling you how I interpreted it and why I was moving forward, so if you're telling me I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I don't care.
The caption that was submitted in your background information says consideration of approving matters related to the filling and operation of the law. So, I would suggest that may be, or
But what was submitted to, for the agenda is what is posted.
This is what's submitted on the background information, but at any rate, I would suggest giving the staff, even if it's not in the form of a motion, some guidance on how you would like us to proceed.
I clearly believe that a lot of these, especially the international water lily, is a tourist attraction. We're experiencing a drought, but I don't want to experience people to stop coming to San Angelo to look and view at the beauties that we do offer in the way of our visitor's center, our municipal pool, and the international water lily. I strongly recommend that we consider the economical dollars that those bring to San Angelo and consider the staff's recommendations as to what they're doing and the waters they're using for the upkeep of those.
Of the visitor's center?
The visitor's center
And the international water
The international water lily collection.
And I'll agree.
So will I.
So, let me ask this, on the visitor's center, is it circulation or is it a tap? What's it?
It circulates, but it's supplemented from water from city tap.
Supplemented.
And they did that primarily
Like a pool.
To keep algae down in that pool and to not have a lot of sediment that would build in, up in it
With staining.
If it was taken from river water.
Well, I got one, two, three people saying, there are four people saying they'd like to see it taken care of as he presented, is what I heard.
I don't have a problem with it, except don't use city water. Do not pull out of a reservoir.
Well, don't use well water.
Don't use well water. If you want to use city water
What you said was, don't, comma, use city water. Wait, but you said, don't use city water.
Don't use well water.
Yeah, there you go.
Use city water.
I don't have a problem with well water.
That's what you said. Everybody said
So, you have direction, Carl?
Yes, sir. And just to clarify that, as Carl said earlier, we are watering, and Charlotte brought this up earlier, watering trees along the river, and a lot of that area doesn't have a sprinkler system, which we can't use anyway. But what they've been doing is utilizing a truck that has a trailer with tanks on it that then has hoses that go out that water. So, we will continue to do that, and we're actually going to increase the amount of trailers and tanks. We have to do that, but just know, we will be filling that, those tanks with water from our city
How long have we been doing that? Watering those trees?
About a month and a half or two months.
Well, the dead ones you see are the ones that are less tolerant, the ones that are less tolerant of drought conditions.
The red oaks.
Red oaks and pecans. But we've been drip watering for at least two, three months. Shane Kelton back there?
Two, three months too late.
We lost some.
Mr. Morrison?
Why don't we use the water that we're draining out of these fire hydrants, run that into these trucks instead of running it for miles and miles down the road?
I believe that's exactly what we've been doing.
That's exactly what they're doing.
That's not what you said. You said you were using private wells.
We would, no.
No, he didn't. He said he would continue to use city water supplies.
That's what I said.
That's what he said.
So, let's use, let's use these fire plugs instead of running, then we can water our trees, but that's wasting water.
But I will say, if we're continuing to water and there's nothing to be flushed, then we would be pulling it still from city water, it just may not be flushed water. That's our, that's what we primarily try to use.
But we're not using well water.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not letting anything, mainly not letting it run down the street, so.
Are you okay, Mr. White? Do you need clarity?
I'm good.
Did you get some instruction?
I didn't look at me.
Well, no, you're the guy that's got to go forth and make this happen. Did you get enough?
No, I'm clear.
Did you get clarity? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Let's move to item number 19. This is the discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution establishing a uniform policy for the city of San Angelo's boards and commissions.
Let me give you the, I'll give you the short version of what my topics were here, and I guess Alicia, I'm not sure who's going to really, but anyway. My, you know, when you look at a lot of these boards and commissions that we get and we, that, when we, for those that have been on the council while, it's not that big a deal, but for us that came on new, I mean, there were people in my first term that were sitting on a board that, I mean, for the full duration, and I had no idea who they were. And I didn't appoint them, and so, the thought process was that, you know, as you come on, and I believe an early comment that even Duane said, was there kind of your cabinet type thing? I think you'd said that in an early conversation. And so, you know, that's the thought process, and I believe the discussion or the item that's brought in front of us is for Establishing a policy where, in the first 90 days?
They have until, well, there was either July or August, so that's really your
The date was either July or August for, to let the council member get used to the orientation, to review, and look at all the different memberships that they would have appointed to them. So, it's council's desire whether they want to have it until July or until August to make those appointments.
Or another timeframe.
Right. It's, that just kind of sets the policy.
And that was the discussion of why to bring it up and say the first few months, and I believe with the way it's drafted, that even a, you know, an appointment that was in place and could be in place for another two years, you know, within the first three months or so, their term would automatically come up as either we have to renew them, or they would, we would point someone else. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, that was kind of the discussion, and again, it's, for the established, being on here a while, it's not that big a deal, but for new folks that come on, that was really the, kind of one of the points of what I was trying to get at. So, comments?
No.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Same here. So, is the resolution take care of what you need?
I believe it does, and really, the question mark is, and probably more addressed, again, to the new kids that came on a couple of years ago, is, or for everyone, is 60 days, 90 days, or should it be four months, or?
90 days.
So, 90 days was kind of my thoughts on the thing, too, but
So, make a motion to resolve
It says discussion, do we need a motion?
It says discussion and possible action.
Okay. As it's, the resolution says 90 days, correct?
I have it through July 31st of each year, or as otherwise coming before the council.
So, you have an early May election?
So, that gives you a flexibility whether you want it August 31st or any time throughout the tenure of the council member.
Okay, so it's August 31st, alright. So, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Adams is the second, Mr. Hirschfeld is the motion. Is there further question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
We had talked at one point about making some kind of an initial date that this wouldn't happen, that, should we consider some kind of an initial first-time implementation type approach where those terms automatically expire at this point, and council will need to reappoint, even though we're not in that election, reelection cycle at this point. Does this resolution address that in the way you want it addressed?
No, all it does is
Well, it kind of does because if you read the resolution, it does say, hold on, let me get back to it. It does, "Or as otherwise coming before the council." So, if a council member would like to reappoint someone to an appointment, they can do that, it's at their discretion.
Well, one of the things we talked about is a possible, as possible language in this resolution was that, at this point, starting today, there'd be a 90-day period that would run where council, where those, all of those appointments would expire, and council would have to either reappoint or appoint someone new.
The point
But we, we haven't had that discussion in a while, and so, I don't recall
The point Mr. Dane's making is that he's reading the resolution to say that it really only goes into effect after the next election. Do you understand?
Yes, and that's why I put that clause, "or as otherwise coming before the council." So, it doesn't necessarily have to be just for, and under the current ordinances anyway, council does have the discretion to review their appointees and appoint somebody else. I mean, it's under the current ordinance. This just formalizes a policy for newly elected council members.
So, in the case of what Mr. Hirschfeld said, after this resolution is adopted, if he looked and said, I don't even know who that person is, and they're supposed to be on my cabinet, I'm going to call them and tell them I'd like to appoint someone else.
Yes, sir.
The ability to do that is, could happen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as presented. Is there further input on this item? Okay. Is there public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 20, this is the discussion of city-owned parcels located at the intersection of South Malone and Beauregard. It's called Spencer's Outlook and Harris Street and South Malone. This is requested by Councilmember Silvas.
Mayor, a couple of years ago, we were going through a tough budget cycle. We were bringing parks online and trying to cut costs, or forcing cost cuts on to the parks folks, as well as giving them more to do. And one of the things we considered, or that council considered, was some of these right-of-way slash, I'm not sure how I would characterize the rest of those, but small parcels around the city that the parks folks were maintaining, and in exchange for, was it Producers Park that came online at that time?
Producers Park and the 14th Street, 6th to 14th Street median.
They were facing taking that additional burden on. One of the proposals was that some of these small areas, there are a lot of these small areas, would be maintained at a lower level. And so, that has, that is what has happened. But there's one particular parcel that has gotten Mr. Silvas' attention, and he's been talking to us about it, and that's what today's discussion is. Do we want to pull that particular parcel out and restore it or maintain it in a different fashion than what was approved? Shane, can you show us pictures while, Mr., I'm not sure how you want to proceed, Mr. Silvas, but
You know, and really, I just wanted clarification because, you know, we talked about that Kiwanis Park just a couple of weeks ago, and my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but I need, I want to educate myself, was supposedly, there's some policy in place that we've changed over to just mowing a 10-foot perimeter around these lots, which is being done here. But then when I saw Kiwanis Park completely mowed, that's where it kind of triggered some interest, is that, well, what is it? Is it a 10-foot, or, you know, why Kiwanis gets all this attention in this little area that later on, you came up with a good idea of maybe doing some wildflowers out there, you know, keeping it, you know, the aesthetics looking that way. I know a number of years ago, there was some prisoners that went out there and cleaned the whole thing all the way down to the river, and it looked, it looked fantastic. But now, it's just an eyesore, and here we are talking about San Angelo being the mid-sized city, and, you know, just trying to make ourselves look good, but this, you know, this area, it's an eyesore, so mosquitoes, rattlesnakes down there. So, that's my main concern, is this not getting the attention it's supposed to be getting, like, again, Kiwanis Park got, so, that's
Well, the distinction, the distinction there is Kiwanis Park is still designated a park area, but it is moved, correct me if I'm wrong, Carl, to the lowest maintenance level, which means it will all be mowed periodically, but no watering, no enhancements in the area, that kind of thing. This area was determined or recommended and then approved to go back to a natural kind of an area with a 10-foot border mowed around the curbs.
Right on the other side of the police station, right on the east
Here's the police station right here. The police station is right here where the mouse is. This would be the Lowe's store, and here's the property right here next to the river.
And Shane, the areas y'all have been doing similar to this are North Concho?
North Concho Park, which was, which is still, I guess, a, a city park, but it has been taken back to a natural state with just a border mowed along its edge, and then also the property at Valley View and College Hills, that is a city-owned property, has been taken back to this same, same natural state area along with Nineteenth Street.
The part that's next to the street, though, is mowed a ten-foot area, or what?
This, this area right here along the outside edge, there is a ten-foot strip, and it's probably just a touch over ten-foot, 'cause we just use a
I got you.
Seven, a six-foot mower, so.
You have some pictures that show kinda... So, this, so Mr. Silva's has been talking to us about this, and we said we'd just put it on the agenda and let council direct us for, for how they want it maintained.
Yeah, I hate to disagree with council members on anything, but, but my perspective is that's not a park. One, I just attended all day yesterday, a, a riparian and watershed discussion about the South Concho River out at Cristoval, and one of the things they talked about is that areas like this being allowed to be natural and grow up in grass and bushes and things like that helps on the stabilization of the riverbank, helps to shut down erosion on the riverbank when water goes across. So, when you mow something and keep it really cleaned up, then water runs and erodes the bank, but when you allow it to grow up in bushes and grass and things of that nature, then the water gets absorbed, it gets slowed down, is less disturbing, those kinds of things, and so, and so my perspective is that we oughta do the ten-foot mowing next to the street and let the rest of that revert back to nature, and that that is actually taking better care of our river than any other choice, and slows down any stormwater that comes off the street and goes to the river there and so forth. So, unfortunately, I feel compelled in this case to disagree with the idea of mowing it.
And, and I just wanted to add that, you know, I respectfully, respectively disagree with that, your statement, that, which is fine, but, you know, I have been in contact with both, you know, various people, but when Ricky Dixon made it, "Hey, I've got prisoners out there that are tied up, give me a couple of weeks," it kinda sounded like it was going to happen. So, if there are prisoners out there that can, I think, if this thing would've been mowed months and months ago since I've been requesting it, we wouldn't even be talking about it, because this drought that we're in, it wouldn't be grown up like, it might've been grown up a little bit, but not as bad as it looks now. So, that's all I'm trying to do, just, just give it a, just give it a trim once and, and leave it alone.
And this area, you can, you, but just the area that, the only area that we can actually mow with mowers would be this top area right here, that's on top. All these, you can see in some of these pictures, like this, where it's down the hill right there, we can't access that with our mowers, that all has to be weeded out by hand, and that's, in the past...
And the prisoners, and the prisoners did that. They even cooked out over there, they had their van, they had, all, they were having a grand old time, so that's what I'm asking, is if you can get some weed eaters down there, just, it looks nice once it was, when it was cleaned up, it looked real nice, so.
And it's...
That's all I'm asking, if you guys wanna knock it down, that's...
Well, it's a discussion item, so in this case, it really is just a discussion item.
Okay.
But Ms. Farmer?
Did I hear someone mention that it, at one time, it was designated a wildlife area? Or to be treated like a wildlife area?
No, it wasn't a wildlife area, this is just a city parcel, it's just a city parcel that, we used to, we did maintain it, we did mow the topside, and then the prisoners have gone in there once or twice and cleaned the bank area, the sloped area, all the way down to the river.
That's actually bad, that's actually bad policy. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
What, what I'm saying, though, is, is if it's a wildlife area, I can understand not weed eating and mowing, et cetera, and so forth, and I agree with what the mayor says in cleaning up the water and helping to maintain, but we require citizens not to, where James go, not to allow their yards, the grass, more than twelve inches high, their vacant lots, et cetera, and so forth, and we make them mow and clean up. So, why are we exempting ourselves from an area that should be at least weeded down and cleaned up for the visual effect? I'm asking that question.
And I've made that comment myself, I've asked that question myself, too.
It, it was done at the time to reduce the labor load on the Parks Department, because we were taking on new additional responsibilities. We took on Produce, Producers Park and then the Medians from Sixth Street to Fourteenth Street, and, you know, we were in such a budget crunch, there was no, no, no way to get us any more manpower or equipment or anything like that at the time to take those additional responsibilities on, so in turn, we started taking stuff away from the Parks Department to maintain.
I understand that, but if you use the prisoners and only the prisoners to do laborious work like this, could it still not, you know, somebody could throw a cigarette or something else into that, and poof, you've got a fire because of the dry, you know, weed content? That poses a hazard to me.
And the prisoners, I mean, are a source of labor, but they're spread really, really thin, and we're having a harder and harder time obtaining prisoners on a regular basis. So, I mean, it's, it's tough to...
But is it possible that if, if they can be put in a rotation of trying to clean this up, you know, at least once every nine, ten months or whatever in the weed-growing season?
That's all I'm asking for, you know? They talk about prisoners...
If it's a city property, we would be, vacant lot would be required to mow it. And I'm not asking it be mowed and trimmed like a yard, I don't think that's what you're asking.
No, no, I'm not.
Is just this unevenness and the fire hazard be removed.
And, and the prisoners' idea has been brought up many times, that, oh, they're running thin, or they're busy, well, you know, you gotta, you can slip them in here sometime, and it's been almost a year that I've been asking for somebody to look at this, so that's all I'm asking.
And the reason we haven't is because council had voted at that one time to take this property completely off and revert it back to a wild, wildland state.
I've been here almost five years, I don't remember that.
It was July tenth, two years ago during the budget presentation.
Wow, I don't remember that.
It was.
But if it is a wildlife, it needs to be posted wildlife area.
Well, I mean, wildland area, to revert back to its natural state was, was what was presented at the time.
But can I say something, Mayor? Councilwoman Farmer, when, when individuals own large parcels of land, they're required to mow just that ten-foot strip, so you'll see this all over town. We're not, I don't think we're necessarily treating ourselves any different.
See, I don't, again, I'm, I, just going through everything I've been learning and then through this process, I think it would be really injurious to the river, particularly this part that's on the slope. I prefer that we, that we not, I mean, that we slow down water, that we don't, you know, we just got there spending a lot of money putting the river, the rafting in all along the river to protect the banks and all that. This is part of protecting the bank, so, you know, whatever the compromise might be, doing more up at the top, but stopping before you go down to the river, because, but, but, but the, that's the reason why I was saying I'd prefer just to mow the ten feet, is because I want to slow water down that's going in, down the riverbanks, because it erodes the riverbanks, so.
What would stop some of the citizens around there to just, if they wanted to go mow it, to mow it?
It could be an adoptive spot area, if, if somebody wanted to adopt it, it could be an adoptive spot through the Parks Department. The Parks Department does have an adoptive spot program, where it's, neighbors or residents in the area could adopt it and, and take care of it and maintain it if they wanted to.
A neighborhood group to come together and, and I know, you know, my little median online, it's city-owned land, but we maintain it, we pay the water bill, we trim the trees, we do all that stuff.
There's, there's two or three properties around town that are just, just like the median in front of, in front of your house. And there are a few areas that members from W T O S and some, several of the churches around the Blackshear area have adopted as well, so it might work.
Would you be willing to take that on? Find an adoptive spot group? Or who does it?
And we can, it's, it's people just come to, come to the city and ask, "Hey, can I adopt a spot?" We have several triangles and stuff all over town that would, that would do it, and we can put up a, a sign that says, "You can adopt this spot here on the, on the deal," and we can list it on our areas of adopt, adoptable areas. Carl, do we still have that list?
Yeah.
We still have a list on our website of adoptable areas around town. And we can add this specific property to that list, so.
Go ahead. By all means.
I mean, the triangle out in front of ASU at campus and Avenue Inn, city doesn't maintain that, right?
We, we only, we only do when it's not adopted, it, in most of the ti, it has been adopted out for, by two or three different organizations over the last several years.
Okay. It's a discussion item, I think, I think we got her beat up. Let's, let's see if we have some luck with the adoptive spot item, and, and then let's move forward with, with other options if that's, doesn't come to pass. Okay. Let's move on then to follow-up and administrative issues. Item number twenty-one, consideration of matters discussed, we didn't have an executive session. Number twenty-two, consideration of board nominations. Now, if it says consideration of board nominations, can we act on it? Says on here, consideration of board nominations. So, what do you think? We'll just do it next time?
We can, but it affects their quorum, so.
What?
I think that's, this, I'm sorry, I think this affects their quorum.
Well, but I mean, I think earlier we were talking about something that
Couldn't vote on.
affected some people, and it, we couldn't vote on it, so I'm saying it says consideration.
To be consistent, yes, we should push this on.
Okay, let's come push it back. Item number twenty-three, consideration of nominating a city council member to serve on the Ports to Plains Trade Corridor Coalition.
I would like to commend Mr. Morrison for everything he's done and, and served on, you've served on that for how many years? Four years? And I think you...
May I, may I remind you, this says consideration of nominating?
There's a verb there, there's a verb.
In this case, it's okay to move forward. The other says, so I've been looking at all of them, Mr. Morrison, consideration of granting, consideration of adopting, this one's consideration of, of nominating, this has a verb.
This says consideration of nominating, just like the one before, that said consideration of board nominations. It's the same statement.
No, it's not, one's a verb and one's not. We're allowed to nominate here.
Go ahead, Kendall.
We can go?
Yes. No, truly, you, yes.
Alright, okay. I'm confused.
Looks to me like it says the same thing, but obviously I'm seeing it wrong. It says consideration of nominating, or consideration of board nominations, or consideration of matters. Go ahead.
So, you've served?
Four years.
Four years.
Four two-year terms, or?
Four years. My knowledge.
And I think he's done a tremendous job. And one of my thoughts, I wouldn't mind if there was someone else that wanted to take that for another short period to allow someone else on the council to, to take that, and I believe that we've had, I believe you've attended a lot of those meetings too.
I've been the alternate, yes.
And so, I guess I would like to recommend that Ms. Farmer take that for this next term.
Okay. And so, we have a nomination of Ms. Farmer for the Ports to Plains Corridor Coalition.
I have a statement to make before we do this.
No, that's no problem. So, let's, let's consider the nomination, and Mr. Morrison, please, go ahead.
Does she have to accept the nomination first, or does?
Oh, I would be more than happy to, to accept the nomination.
Can I also make a nomination? I mean, or do we have to wait? What do you wanna do?
We'll be one at a time.
Okay.
We have a nomination, so we'll go with that, but let's see what, let's go ahead and have the discussion now, okay? Mr. Morrison, go ahead.
I have served on this for four years, and when I started on this, my goal was, and it was stated on the website, that I wanted a four-lane divided highway from San Angelo to Del Rio, because of the safety and because of all the accidents and all the dangers that it been on this road. Well, I didn't get a four-lane, but we are in the process right now, and it has been approved, we're doing a super one-lane with wide shoulders and passing lanes over four miles from San Angelo to Sonora, and then we're doing engineer studies from Sonora to Del Rio. So, I would say that I have been very, very successful, and I'm not taking credit for it, I'm not taking blame for it, but I'm saying that in the four years that I've been on, this has been done. I would also like to say that on Loop 306, all of this work that's being done out there is Ports to Plains work. I have been there, I have fought it, I have been to all, I have been to almost all of the meetings, I have made the Washington fly-ins, I have visited with state reps, I have visited with federal reps, I have been to the board meetings. San Angelo is respected, and San Angelo is represented, and represented well in this Ports to Plains Board. I have done a good job, and I want to continue this job. Now, Ms. Farmer's been trying for two years to take this, and I know this, and I don't know why, but I know she has, and of course, four votes will take me out of it and put her in it. I don't want to leave this, I want to stay, I want to continue, I have done a good job, I am respected on that board, and I have, I have done, I have done very well for the City of San Angelo, and there is no reason to take me off of this. But, again, four votes will do it, and if that's what y'all want to do, all I can do, I'm not gonna like it, 'cause I feel that you're taking something away from me that I want, and I want badly. So, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
I, uh...
Ms. Farmer?
Would like to respond in the fact that, that city manager came to me and asked me to join this coalition, this force, and to be there, especially, you know, the rail side and the roads, and I too have visited with various senators and state representatives and U.S. representatives with reference to the Port to Plains, its purpose and what it is doing. I have nothing but great admiration for the work that is being done to provide the goods safely and transportable from Mexico to Canada and into the United States, to both of those countries, and have attended those countries when necessary for Ports to Plains, whether it be Canada or various places in Mexico, I have traveled. The purpose of this board, to me, is serving, serving for the City of San Angelo, it's kinda like the mayor pro tem. We rotate that position out to allow each council member to serve additionally to the citizens, to their constituents, and I don't understand why there is, if there's a reluctance to rotate this position out for services to the community.
Okay. Positions are stated, we have a nomination, let's vote on that nomination and then move forward from there. The nomination is for Ms. Farmer to take over the Ports to Plains Trade Corridor Coalition membership. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think I'm hearing two nays.
Were you gonna hear another nomination, or is that it? We only have?
The nomination has been filled.
Okay.
Okay.
Who seconded the motion? I had the nomination from Mr. Hirschfield.
Second.
You seconded, okay.
Okay. I believe we have...
I believe this is about the cruelest thing that has ever been done on this council that I have seen in ten years. But I, I mean, you've, you've got the right, four votes controls, and that's good, that's good, but this is cruel.
Mr. Morrison, I, I don't, I don't see it as personally as you do, and I, and I apologize that you do see it so personally. I think it's good for us to rotate, and I think that it's important right now, because we are the dominant position, the dominant provider of logistics and the dominant provider of impetus and motivation for getting this extended into Mexico, and right now, that's been a, a problem, because you're unwilling to take those trips to Mexico.
Mexico is not a member of Ports to Plains. We've been trying, no, they've not, they have not paid their dues. It's zero, zero, we've been trying for three years to get them to pay, and they will not pay. They are not members of Ports to Plains.
Okay. That's, that's the reason for my vote. I think it's important that we get things done, to get a bridge across in Del Rio and some things of that nature. I think Ms. Farmer has been very involved in that process, I think San Angelo is very involved in that process, and that's the reason for my vote. Moving on now to item number twenty-four, the announcements and consideration of future agenda items. I've got one. Mind them, housekeeping-wise, the next meeting, I think, is October the sixteenth. Okay? The housekeeping part of it, the next meeting's October sixteenth. Okay, Mr. Silva's?
Now, speaking of Ports to Plains, I know that several folks went down to Durango, and I, I'd like to get an update on, on how that went, what came of it, what became of it, what, what we got out of it, so maybe next time around, somebody could...
Ms. Grandstaff, it'll be post-employment, but are you able to help with that presentation? Ms., Ms. Grandstaff, it'll be post-employment, but are you able to help with that presentation?
Certainly I could. Depending on when you schedule it, it could also be Michael Reeves, Phil Neighbors. There's a number of us that could do that, but I'd be more than happy to do so in my new capacity.
Right. That seems like it's all tied together. How about if you take a look at whether October 16th can come together and then if not, that we do it very soon after that, okay?
I'd be glad to, thank you.
And see what we can come up with.
And that's on the Ports to Plains, every, all the progress. We're not just focusing on a Mexico trip.
No.
We're focusing on the Ports to Plains, correct?
But, but I'd like to...
But he does want to hear, he said he'd like to know about the trip to Durango.
What connections I saw...
Sure. And I'd like to hear about the trip to DC too then, okay?
Because I saw some recycling that happened.
I mean, if we're going to get picky on the thing, let's get on every...
Okay. But so what he's after is...
That's fine.
What, what, what you're hearing then, this is for council. What we're hearing then is that we want to have an item on the agenda that reviews San Angelo's Ports to Plains involvement, including recent activities, okay?
Many of you may know that Michael Reeves attended the Development Corporation meeting yesterday with a brief update. So I think those of us that attended, that's easy to do, will, and will report on, as you say, the trip to the annual conference as well as Durango, which we believe was very successful and we...
Well, and the annual conference is right now, right?
Yes, it's next week.
Yeah, so you'll be able to tell us about the annual conference. Tell us about Durango. Tell, and just, that'll be fine. Okay. Another, another item.
I have one.
Okay.
I would like a review or a report from the outside auditors who did our review and did our report. I don't believe it's ever been submitted or read to council as to their findings or their recommendations. And that was in May or April or May. And I would like to see that report come to council to report on those findings.
Okay, others?
I just, I'd like to just close out with saying, I think we need to be very sure that we get public notice out there with reference to the decisions that were made today as it relates to water and hand watering and et cetera.
Okay, so Mr. Wilson, through public information and, and then hopefully we get as much, and I'm, in fact, I'm sure we will, media support as possible. Okay. All right, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.